I got it. No, I'm in now. There you go. Yeah. Shnei. Thank you.
Denise and Christine, you should mute your audio.
Mine does say mute. Uh oh, I can hear me. So why didn't I?
You might have to do it in the lower left.
Okay, so we are going to go ahead and get started in just a minute. We're just figuring out our final technical logistics here and figuring out how best to proceed. So we will get started in just a minute. All right, so we're just testing. We're just testing our, to get rid of that, see if we get rid of the echo. So your volume on your computer should be all the way down. So I'm going to just keep talking a little bit to make sure we're getting rid of our echo. We are just getting ready to go ahead and get started in just a minute. Thanks to the folks who are coming to us online. Yeah, I think it's. I'm hearing it from yours. So, yep, still an echo. We're just finishing working out some of the technical pieces. So we are going to go ahead and get started in just a minute. And yeah, Randy, can you hear me and without an echo? All right, we're getting there. We're working out. Okay. Just leave them plugged in. So we're just getting rid of our echoes here in the room. We thank everybody for their patience while we work out the technical things. What, everybody who's tuning in on Zoom and through phone, thank you all for doing this. And what you're seeing is all of the panelists for this meeting. So the school board members, Sydney and Kristen, we're all in the same room together. We're just all coming to from our own screens. So because we are all in the same room together, we are just trying to work out some of the technical difficulties here of making sure we're not getting too much echo. So if at any point we do lose audio or we're getting echo, feel free to jump in and let us know. So now that we've sort of worked out some of our technical things, I'm going to go ahead and, we're hearing in the chat, it sounds like things are working much better. So I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. So I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order at 6:36. And first thing I want to do is just thank everybody for coming. We do have the full board, our superintendent, our interim principal, and our administrative assistant for the SAU here as panelists in the, in the GBS gym with us. And then we do also have some community members who are here in person with us. We thank everybody for their flexibility as we figure out how to make this meeting happen. And also the flexibility in moving it to tonight. Because if you aren't going to figure out your opening of a school plan during a pandemic, during a tropical storm, really, are you doing this year right? So we are going to, I'm, the first thing I'm going to do is just go over that we are having this meeting back in person. But we are still having access available via Zoom and phone in. And so if anybody is having difficulty accessing the Zoom or the telephone access, please let us know. You can find the Zoom link at the www.gbsox.org. And you can call 603-863-9689 if you are experiencing any difficulties in accessing this. But because we do have an in-person location for the meeting tonight, we will continue the meeting. Because we do have the, the board here in person. So that is just a little bit of, of housekeeping for the meeting. Also, I just want to let everyone know that we are trying to model and practice some of the guidelines that will be in place when people do return to school. So what that means is we are all masked. Everyone who's here in the room is wearing a mask. Maintaining our six-foot distance as much as possible. We, I did, I did confirm with Sydney that the expectations in terms of students and staff in the classrooms is that there will not be eating other than during those designated times of snack or lunch. But if people do need a drink at some point, you can take your mask off for a brief drink, put it right back on again. She said that we're really going to encourage each other not to like spit the water at each other or anything like that. So we're going to try to model our best classroom behavior, but also our best experience of what it will be like as we think about folks returning to the building in terms of distance and in terms of what the proper protocols and equipment will be. We are, you know, taking attendance in terms of who is here in the room, but we are not, you know, passing out any materials or sharing anything at this point. So just a little bit of information about sort of what the meeting is going to look like and what we're anticipating our meetings will look like moving forward. So with that, we are, our first item is to approve the agenda. And we do have some amendments to our agenda that we will need to make tonight. The first of those is that we will be adding a public comment after the consent agenda on the agenda itself. So before our adjournment, we will add another public comment period. And I'll talk a little bit more in a minute about what those will involve. The next amendment that we need for the agenda is that we will need to remove the June 9th non-public minutes from the consent agenda. There are not June 9th non-public minutes to review. And we need to change under minutes, there are two that say June 9th, 2020. And we'll need to change one of those to read June 2nd, 2020. So the first of the minutes should reflect June 2nd. Let's see, we also will be adding, if we need it, we're not, at this point, we may not need it, but we will add a non-public per our typical agenda. We typically have a non-public before we adjourn the meeting. So we will add that as well tonight. And if it is not necessary this evening, then we'll just go ahead and skip that. So those are the first items that we will need to amend our agenda tonight. Anything else that any folks have? Okay, so we had an addition of adding discussion of printed materials for the board for future meetings. So that'll go in as number seven under our discussion and action items. We also need to amend the agenda to reflect that, that, the last item on the agenda, which is the next meeting. The next meeting will be August 18th. So we will have another meeting in August. At that meeting, the board will be reviewing and approving the handbook that will move whatever plan is decided on tonight, whatever plan moves forward. The handbook for that plan will be reviewed and approved by the board on August 18th. So August 18th at 6:30 should be reflected as the next meeting. Okay. Right, anything else for amendments to the agenda? Okay, so we will need a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Okay, we have a motion from Denise. And we have a second from Leslie. And what I'm going to do is, because we do have folks who are coming in via phone tonight, I'm going to ask for our votes to be taken as a roll call tonight so that folks will know who those votes are similar to how we've done our meetings previous to this. So I will just call for a roll call vote to approve the agenda. And so we have Christine. Christine votes aye. Denise?
Aye.
Denise says aye. Leslie?
Aye.
Leslie, aye. Brittany, aye. And Jody? Jody is aye. All right. And so the agenda is approved as amended. So our next item is to open the public hearing. The public hearing tonight is to hear the agents of the school expendable trust fund to transfer the sum of $50,000 from unex, unexpended fund balance voted by district voters at the March 3rd, 2020, at the annual school district meeting. So we are opening the public hearing for this. This was something that was done, feels like lifetimes ago at this point. But we are at the point where we would be moving this to the school expendable trust fund for maintenance and repair. And folks might remember just briefly, this was to build up our trust fund with the understanding that we have some major projects coming up that will need, that will require significant expense. And rather than looking to build those into operating budgets, the trust fund is a way for us to start to have some money set aside so that we can take care of some of those projects. Okay, anything else? Comments from the board or other public hearing comments for this item?
Just one quick comment. I just wanted to state that this was from Article 3 from last year's vote. And this always goes through the DRA, the Revenue Authority for New Hampshire, to make sure that we actually have this money to put aside. So for the record, we do, and it's very close to the amount that we expected we were to have at the end of last fiscal year.
Okay. All right, not hearing any other comments on this. At this point, we closed the public hearing, correct? And then we take the, the action is taken in the standard board meeting. All right, so at this point, I will close the public hearing. And we will move on to our first public participation. So one thing that I want to discuss tonight is our modes and methods for public participation during this meeting. We clearly, we have folks here in person. We have folks coming to us on Zoom and on, by phone. And so we will have two times for public participation to come in now at the start of the meeting. And then we will open it up for public comment again at the end of the meeting. We have provided several different forums for public to comment on this process through surveys and other forums. And we want to make sure that we are still leaving opportunities for the public to comment here with us, but also recognizing that once we get into the discussion and action items, the work of the board, that conversation really needs to focus on the five board members who will be taking the vote tonight. And understanding that if questions come in as that conversation between the board members is happening, those may not be questions that we're able to address in the moment so that we can focus the work of the board. A lot of the questions that are going to, I imagine, that people have are going to come in that next stage. It's going to happen once we've made this decision and that handbook is being put together and we head towards that meeting on the 18th. A lot of those logistical questions will happen at that point. And so I certainly, we want to hear from the public. We would like comments to come in. If there are comments that come in through Zoom, we certainly will read those during the public comment period either now or, you know, later on in our agenda. In our second public comment period, we're happy to read those into the record. And so I would like to open it up now for public comment if there are folks either through Zoom or here in person that would like to make a comment. And then the, the board will undertake the larger conversation that we'll have tonight. And this is where in person, we'll stare at each other. And on the computer, we will wish that we had that little box that showed us that people were typing.
I also want to say that if somebody does prefer to speak and let me know in chat and Brittany lets me know who that is, I can, you know, change it so that you're, you are allowed to talk where everybody hears you. If you prefer that to writing something in.
Yep, so we have one comment coming in online that says, have you discussed options with public health experts?
Yes, we've discussed options with multiple public health experts, including CDC representatives, multiple representatives from the New Hampshire Department of Health and Family Services. They have meetings, two, sometimes three a week. And Dr. Chan had sat up. We have had a lot of guidance from the New Hampshire and National School Nurse Association that's coming in. So there has been a lot of, a lot of communication and a lot of guidance coming from multiple public health agencies.
Thank you. Perfect, all right. Let me just do this here and then we'll go to someone in the room. So we have a Q and A question. Will this meeting be addressing which option is being leaned towards? I just closed it, for reopening in the fall. And yes, so this meeting is where the board will be taking our official vote to select which option we will be moving forward with in the fall. And so that means we, you know, when we will talk about this during our discussion, we certainly recognize that there's some flexibility that's going to be needed and we may have to move, move between some options. But this, this meeting is where we will be taking the vote to select which of the two options are being presented tonight. And we have a question that says, have you discussed decreasing preschool costs if school goes hybrid or full Zoom? That's something that we will certainly look at if we have time tonight. But that may be one of those logistic questions that comes as the handbook is created and the details are worked out once an option is selected. And we did have somebody in the room, if you would like to go ahead. In terms of like personal protective and policy and sure, and that, that is definitely going, so we had a question in the room about what will we be doing in terms of protecting the kids? And that is certainly going to come in the presentation that Sydney will give to the board as we move forward with looking at our options. That's going to be, absolutely be one of the items that we discuss. Yep. Let me do this question that came in and then we'll come to you. So what will the kindergarten classrooms look like? Will they be able to have play areas and carpet time? This is certainly a question that is going to come later. This is not the focus in the work of the board right now. The board is, you know, like I said, really focused on selecting which of these options it will be and what classrooms will look like and what the flow of, you know, what the setups will be and all of that kind of stuff will certainly come during that, this next phase, this next planning. That's one of the reasons why we really wanted to move forward and have the meeting as soon as we could, since it needed to be rescheduled last night, is so that the folks who will be doing that next stage planning can get right to it. It's really important that they be able to move ahead knowing which plan will be in place. Okay, yes, go ahead. We have another question in the room. Sure, so the question from the room was, has there been any consideration for looking at offering additional time or, or options for children who have two essential worker parents who have difficulty with something like a hybrid or a remote option? And then the other part of the question is looking at, is there a combination of some of these options that could be presented where, you know, to, to sort of merge some of those? And I will say in terms of the first one, it's something that has certainly, the question has come up. And I think we're not yet in the, being able to make that decision because the, the, in terms of the dominos of the decisions that have to be made, that first one needs to be made. Because if the decision is made for full five days a week back in person, then the, that answers that question. And so the board has to take this step first before we can look at, are there other options for specific populations of students? Whether that be students with two essential worker parents, students who have, you know, special services or IEP needs. There's certainly lots of groups of students who are going to need to be handled in different ways than the, than the general main decision for the, for everyone as a whole. So that, that question is certainly on our minds and we'll explore it more. In terms of looking at some combined options, I know from the presentation, and I think this will come up in Sydney's presentation as well tonight, that those things were certainly looked at by the SRS committee. And what they brought to us was what they feel is the most feasible, the most applicable to a continuity of learning. And, you know, gives us the most clear parameters for us to work with. I think there are hundreds, if not thousands, of variations and moving parts that we could look at in terms of options. And they really did that work for us. And what they brought us forward was their, their best version of those things. And I think Sydney will probably speak more to that as we get in, in, more into the conversation. We do have another, a couple other Q and A questions. If we're expected to make a commitment later this week about how we want our children to start the year, we really need to know ASAP what will be expectations before school. And also how kids will need to stay home if they have some, some symptoms. I'm sure I'm not the only family with kids with asthma and allergies that can overlap COVID system, symptoms. And that is something that will be part of the, the discussion tonight and a part of the presentation. Have any health experts or state officials inspected the, the school and air handling systems? That will be part of the discussion tonight. Will we have the option to decline in-person school choice and be online if family has concerns about vulnerable family members? Again, that will definitely be part of the conversation tonight. If you choose the five-day model with using space at Coniston, will we be switching to another model in six weeks when the weather gets too cold? Would that then be the hybrid model? That will definitely be part of the conversation tonight. So a lot of these questions are things that are going to be answered as we move forward in the board's larger conversation this evening. And let me just look here. And we have a number of questions coming in through our chat. I'm just going to run through a couple of them. A lot of these are going to be things that will be covered during the conversation of the board. Do you have any data you can share about what model projects the longest duration of in-person school? That will be discussed tonight. Has consideration been taken to families having to look outside of the home for childcare while working? Hang on one second. Potentially increasing exposure to children, then in turn increasing exposures to contacts upon returning to school. Certainly, we'll talk about that tonight. How can parents make a commitment for their child to attend or homeschool or V-Lax without knowing what the classroom experience will be like for their children? This is particularly important for preschool and kindergarten grades where play has been emphasized. What is the makeup of the SRS committee? Can we please hear the presentation and wait on the Q and A? And would it make sense to move to presentation before questions? Certainly. And our, our model for our board meetings has traditionally been to start with a public comment period. I will say, in my years on the board, this is the most public comment we've ever had in our first public comment period. So we really, I mean, I think that this is a great thing and it reflects the commitment of the community to engaging in this conversation with us. And a lot of these questions will be answered during the board's conversation. So I appreciate people bringing them up and letting us know that you all are looking for answers to the same questions that the board has, quite frankly. So it looks like our questions have slowed down coming in online. And just check in here, it looks like here in the room with folks who are here. I am going to move us forward at this point off of our public participation. But we will again provide, you know, opportunities for that towards the end of the meeting. So I know that we've sort of launched ourselves into our continuity of learning plan, but we do have a first agenda item to deal with before we do that. So our first discussion and action item for tonight is to follow up on the public hearing that we just had, the transfer of the $50,000 to the school expendable trust fund, maintenance and repair. So we do need a motion from the board to transfer $50,000 to the school expendable trust fund, maintenance and repair. And we have a motion from Leslie and we need a second.
Second.
And we have a second from Christine. And we will roll call this vote. So Christine?
Aye.
Denise?
Aye.
Jody? Jody was aye. Leslie?
Aye.
Aye, and Brittany, aye. And so unanimous, the motion is approved for the transferring of the $50,000 to the school expendable trust fund. Okay, so our second discussion and action item for tonight is the presentation of the Grantham Continuity of Learning Plan for the 2020, 2021 year. And we will move the presentation, I'm going to hand things over to Sydney. And we will move the presentation, I'm going to hand things over to Sydney to guide the presentation and then we will move into the discussion.
Okay, so I. Are you muted?
I'm muted.
Okay. Sydney talks into mute.
So Sydney, try talking. Nope, too close. Sorry, everybody, we're just figuring out how we can make sure that you all can hear Sydney. We're just going to make sure we can get subs to Sydney so you guys can hear her.
I'm going to try now. Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I'm going to try again. Is this much better? Okay. We can chalk this up to just one more thing that we have figured out through schools running during a pandemic and having meetings and everything else that we have had to do. If you just give me one second, I'm going to bring up the presentation. For those of you who are at the parent forum, it is the presentation that I gave last Thursday. But I do have some additional information because new information is coming out all the time. So I do have some additional information and some additional slides. Wherever I have added something compared to last Thursday, I have put it in green. Just so if anybody was listening on Thursday and something's new, you'll know that you're looking at something new. Okay, are we good with screen sharing? All right. So this is the picture that I started with from the parent forum. And I, I really wanted to start with this because this was a school from some of the Greg Mortensen work where girls were first allowed to have access to public schools. And they were so incredibly excited to have access to their schools that they, even when the river washed out and the bridge was tattered and barely hanging on, this is a group of schoolchildren who are, this is how they crossed the river to get to school. So I know that this is an extreme in terms of the picture and this, this isn't Grantham, but there have been parts of this process with the SRS committee and the SRS team that have felt like this is how hard we're working to make sure that our kids can get back to their public education. I wanted everybody to really see the paradigm shift. We've been trying to put some things in context. So for example, we have a big paradigm reversal. Public schools were originally designed to maximize building capacities, to share resources, to share personnel, for example, paraeducators and equipment and supplies, to share space, to emphasize collaboration. In a matter of moments, it seems, public schools upon opening must de-densify all building capacity, not share resources, personnel, paraeducators, even specials. We have to think about what we're doing with our specialists. We can't share equipment and supplies. We are no sharing of space unless it's absolutely vital. And we are being asked to discourage all collaboration among our students. So this is a real paradigm shift to everything that we've tried to do for a very long time in public schools and the way that we think of public schools as a resource. Some virus information then and now, just another thing to put in context. When we moved to remote instruction in March 15th, 2020, we had one new confirmed case and six total cumulative cases. And now that we're considering reopening August 4th, 2020, we have 31 new confirmed cases and we have had 6,513 total cumulative cases. I just updated that as of Monday, I believe. Somebody in the parent forum asked to have our Sullivan County numbers, so I made sure that I had those. In Sullivan County, we currently have five active cases and 40 cumulative cases. And in Grafton County, we currently have six active cases and 103 cumulative cases. And again, we thought this board meeting was last night. So these were the, these were the, this was the upcoming data from the day before. So the SRS committee has worked incredibly hard. This is a group of people at GVS who have been incredibly committed to figuring out, again, how we can get those kids across the river and get back to our public education. We have some common beliefs, which is that the current numbers in our area allow us for, that allow us to consider the opportunity to open school. We do have low numbers, we acknowledge that, and that's what is allowing us to even consider this as a possibility. We have a belief that children are best served in schools for academic, social, emotional, and physical wellness and growth. And we have a very healthy building with an excellent HVAC system. And we'll, we'll set up routine cleaning and disinfecting and all classrooms have sinks. So to get back to the question about HVAC, we are very, very fortunate compared to many schools in New Hampshire. We have an excellent HVAC system. We have inspections of all of our systems. And our HVAC system in particular only brings in outside air. So there's a constant outside air, constant outside air coming into the classrooms so that there's no recirculating of air, which I know is, which is a concern in some schools. So in terms of our HVAC system, that was actually another factor in the committee's belief that yes, we can do something to bring kids back to school. The SRS Planning Committee had one very essential question. And it is, how can the Grantham School District provide the highest quality education while maintaining the health and safety of our community? So those were the two main things that we needed to balance. We had some guiding principles and mindsets and we embarked on this work with the following. All work must involve stakeholder input. I'm sure that some of you have read the 113 pages of survey responses that we've gotten from parents and guardians. We sent another one out after the parent forum and the board was actually able to get additional input from that. So thank you very much for that. We know that all recommendations must be aligned with evidence-based best practices in pandemic and health and safety guidelines. And we know that these are continually changing, even throughout our work, they're changing, they're changing sometimes this week and they may change next week. We understand that this is a constant moving target based on what scientists are learning about the virus and how people are learning to approach the virus as schools reopen. All of our recommendations must take equity into consideration. And all of our recommendations, we really firmly believe, must fit into a flexible and adaptable model based on the changing needs of the virus and our community, which means we're constantly going to be, have to watch, have to watch the community numbers. We're going to have to watch the virus and that we have to have a plan that's going to be flexible because kids may be in school and remote and, you know, in school again. We, we have no idea what's going to happen in terms of what happened, what may happen with the virus here. And planning for flexibility was something we discussed a lot. And, you know, if the plan doesn't work, change the plan and never change the goal. That was something that really struck me. Our efforts were focused on providing options that will meet our goals and be flexible, which again, going back to it, is the highest quality education while maintaining the health and safety of our community. We have to continue to balance those things. And given that, we're going to present two options tonight. And even though we're presenting two options, we, we all understand, I think everybody understands that at any time, the potential need to go fully remote could happen. It could happen the way it did last March. It could happen faster, we don't know. But we know that that is always an option on the table. So we have, in all of the work that we were doing, I'm going to mention three very key considerations for Grantham Village School. Student numbers is the first thing. Our student population at the beginning of last year was 240. Our student population at this point is 275. So for Grantham Village School, that's a significant increase in students. We can talk about the various reasons why that's happening, but I'm sure Mrs. Malloy will tell you how many phone calls she gets every day for enrollments and registration and rentals and leases and everything else. The second key consideration, which is a really big one in our decision-making, is our staffing numbers. So in any regular year, we have the staff that we need to run the school efficiently. There's, we're confident in that. This is not a regular year. So during this year, we have to carefully reallocate staff to maximize educational benefit and safety. So as I said, with that paradigm shift at the beginning, we always are using staff in multiple places and times and, and spaces and situations throughout the day. And unfortunately, that's not something that we can do. We are no longer safely allowed to just have people bouncing from different groups to groups all day. So that is a big consideration for us. Substitutes present several concerns. The availability, again, in a really good year, we have trouble sometimes getting substitutes for the school. A lot of substitutes have their own health risks and may be reluctant to come in. And the more unknowns we have about substitutes coming into the building increases the health risks to others and the quality of education. We have reached out to our subs. We have confirmation that three out of our 12 regular subs will return. So that, that is a consideration for us. And you'll notice that I put D, behavioral decision-making, in bold and italics because this is a very important one. It's important for me as a school leader and it's very important for the committee, which is if we recommend something that is fragile in terms of a system of people being in or out or needing a sub, then the more we do that, the more it's likely to break. If we set up a system where the staff knows that they can quarantine when they need to, they can self-isolate when, when they need to for the safety of everybody and that we have the flexibility to work with our staff at the school to make sure that we don't have to close down because we don't have staff, that behavioral decision-making becomes crucial. We have to set up a system that will allow people to make the good, healthy decisions that we need them to make. And three is, as much as we believe school is critical, school is not going to look like school in, no matter what model we look at. It will look different based on the different models, but in general, school will not look like school. So we really wanted to make sure that we balance those health and safety things with how much of that quality education and having school still be school for kids. There were a couple of questions about kindergarten and playing. We believe that we're going to be able to find ways for kids to play and to learn and it won't look like the way that they've played and learned before. And we're not happy about that. But we also have to balance it and we certainly realize that having them there under different circumstances is much better than not having them there at all. So with any model that's chosen of in-person instruction, we will be following the three Ws, which are wash your hands, strict hand washing and hygiene protocols, watch your distance, six-foot distancing for all staff and students. We went down the research very deeply into the three feet because we know, we hear a lot about the three feet. Three feet is not acceptable to our committee's recommendations. We strongly believe that six-foot distancing is the more appropriate way to go. And wear a mask. All students and staff with specific times, we will give for mask breaks because we know that we all need one. I will probably need one soon. And in classroom and outside, considerations and options for special needs students who may not be able to wear a mask, we will certainly take that into consideration. I do want to remind everybody that cloth masks aren't specifically PPE. So when we talk about PPE in this presentation and in other areas, some children and some teachers will need a higher level of PPE. A cloth mask will probably not be enough for everybody. In terms of school-wide changes, we are recommending a closed campus. No visitors, volunteers, or outside organizations. It presents too high of a risk. And unfortunately, we were, are recommending no before or after-school program until the situation changes. It is something that unfortunately, we would not be able to staff, do cleaning and disinfecting, supervision, all of those things. It is unfortunately something that we hope we will be able to get back in place as soon as we aren't dealing with this kind of a pandemic anymore. So here's the first of the two options, which is a full in-person, five-day-a-week review. So this would be possible under specific conditions. So we would access additional outdoor and other spaces possibly for as long as possible in order to de-densify the GVS building. So Camp Coniston, if you haven't heard, has had the very generous, wonderful offer of having us there possibly for the first six weeks. We wouldn't be able to go beyond that because there's no heat, there would be travel conditions, those kind of things. But if you've been there, it's a wonderful space and the committee definitely believes in accessing outdoor space when possible. We're looking into outdoor tents on our campus so that we can have places for people to eat outside, be outside, have breaks, maybe instruction, a variety of things outside and potential for other spaces around Grantham, you know, possibly as needed. This full in-person is contingent on having at least 25% of parents who choose to keep their children at home. To do this, we have a requirement of the following, and I'm thinking of Coniston or other local spaces. We have to comply with all health and safety guidelines for schools, which we can do. I've checked into all of those and we can do those. But plus, security on site, a nurse or an LNA on site and additional custodial services for that site. So we know that we can meet the criteria, but we also have to acknowledge that each additional personnel request represents additional cost for the district. The key, like I tried to narrow these down to the five key advantages because I know that there are going to be a lot more than five advantages and disadvantages to all of this. But the key advantages of the full in-person would be that we would get to see and work with all the kids and build those relationships and they can build relationships with each other. We would have eyes on all children for health, safety, social, and emotional needs and related services. And we can establish routines to help all students move to remote learning if and when necessary and control over student cohorts. So we would, I'm going to talk about that a little bit more. We would be running the cohort model in the school and allowing assessment to support meeting children where they are in their learning and identify any gaps and strengths that they may have developed since we went remote in March. The five key disadvantages of in-person is we do, that does present an increased risk of exposure. It is just almost zero flexibility with staff. We would have a very high need for substitutes. And I do have to say that that goes back to that behavioral decision-making that I mentioned before, where flexibility with staff is going to be a huge issue for us. It would bring all students back and then most likely move to remote more quickly. Opening would even be in question. And I know that a lot of people will say, well, the virus isn't here. It's not just the virus here. It's that if we have staff who need to quarantine or isolate, it doesn't matter if the virus is here or not, we may have to close if I can't staff the building and have proper supervision. Because once again, we would have smaller cohorts and we can't just say, hey, you have 10 kids, can you take these other 10 for the day? That's what we would do in a normal year, but unfortunately, we can't do that now. All classrooms that we have would have to be completely emptied out. It would look much less like school and we would also have the intensity of needing movers and storage. And it definitely represents increased budgetary needs, which I'll go over a little bit later. Option B, the second option, is the hybrid option. And of the hybrid options that were presented, both parents and educators chose the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday flex day where everybody's remote and Thursday, Friday in two groups. So if you're looking at this, and it might not directly be A through L in the alphabet, but obviously we would keep families together. Group A would be in school on Monday and Tuesday with their classroom teacher. On Wednesday, everybody would be remote and a variety of activities would be happening. And then Thursday, Friday, they would have remote instruction with a GVS facilitator online. Because group B at that time would be in school receiving instruction from the classroom teacher and we can't have the classroom teacher teaching in the class, watching students and teaching everybody remotely. So we would have somebody from GVS be assigned to facilitate the remote instruction on those days. So we would have somebody from GVS be assigned to facilitate the remote instruction on those days. The five key advantages of a hybrid option is that it de-densifies the building significantly, increasing health and safety, especially with cleaning and disinfecting protocols. We still get to see all students and work with them and have eyes on kids. It decreases our class sizes, allowing for more in-depth and personal instruction. School looks more like school. They wouldn't have to be in those completely empty classrooms. School would look a little bit more like school. Flexibility with staffing, much more flexibility with staffing and a decreased need for substitutes. And specialists and special education services may have additional opportunities to work with students. So if the board decides to go with a hybrid option, we would start to explore IEP and 504 plans to see if that's an opportunity for special education or 504 students to receive services without losing classroom time. There are still a lot of factors in there based on plans and transportation and things, but it would open up that opportunity. This is a new slide, so that's why I put that in green. Mathematica did statistical modeling. They assumed six-feet social distancing in schools and ran models under the assumptions that students wouldn't always be 100% compliant with mask wearing. So I think they did some realistic statistical modeling there. And they did this for the state of Pennsylvania and they just ran mathematical models after model after model. And their conclusion was that opening school buildings for part-time attendance with smaller student groups is nearly as safe as keeping them closed entirely. So hybrid reduces the number of infections. As long as the community is not experiencing substantially high rates of infection, which we are not, schools can safely reopen for part-time attendance of smaller groupings of students without contributing to large acceleration of community infection rates. And whether they can safely open for full-time attendance of all students is less clear. So that's what they found in their modeling. In addition, they also found that the safest approach to reopening is a hybrid model that organizes students into smaller groups, attending at different times. The way that they did this is that the surest way to slow down the disease is to reduce the number of contacts each child has in a day by organizing schools and classrooms so that not all students are together at the same time. And this was the one that resonated with me in particular because this was a concept that we kept coming back to in the SRS group, which is a school that brings all students in every day might experience five infections within a few weeks of opening, but a school that splits its population into two groups and brings students in two days a week might keep running for an entire semester without experiencing five infections. So we talked a lot in the SRS group about sustainability. We don't want to just full-on open and bring everybody in just to close. So we, we believe that the hybrid model would allow us, allows to stay open longer. The disadvantages of the hybrid option is less control of cohorts due to childcare situations. So I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in a minute. We recognize fully, and this was a big topic of conversation, we recognize fully that it is harder for families to work with hybrid. That certainly was not lost on the committee. Not lost on me either. You know, I've been the working mom of three for about 15 years now and I certainly understand what it is like to juggle three kids and work. The need to change schedules for holiday weeks. So students on a Monday rotation, for example, don't miss instruction regularly. That would actually happen in our proposed calendar for the first week where we would have Labor Day. In that kind of situation, we would have group A come on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and group B come on Thursday, Friday. So we would have to, there's a lot of Monday holidays. We would need to work out, all of those out. It can be, a disadvantage can be managing the schedules for instruction and assessment for staff and students, including that tech device transfer between home and school, the devices going back and forth. And a disadvantage is that we wouldn't get to see students every day. From the responses that we got over the weekend, and this is a new slide because this is coming from the responses from the parent forum polling that went out after. So we asked parents, how many would send their students if we were in the full in-person model? And then in-person and full, the V-Lax model and homeschool. And we will talk a little bit more about V-Lax and homeschooling in a minute. But 173 students would be coming to school, which represents 64%. 70 students would be going to V-Lax and 26 students would be homeschooled. If you extrapolate this to our total student population based on the number of people that we had responded, this would equate to about 190 students in the building each day. If we look at the hybrid option, we would have 190 students who would be going to school in the hybrid. That's what the parent or guardian choice would be. We would have 49 students doing V-Lax and we would have 26 students doing homeschool. In the hybrid model, this represents about 105 students in the building each day. I do want to say that the recommendation from this administration to the board is that the hybrid is the better and safer option for GVS. I wanted to equate it quite clearly to Newton's Third Law. I do believe that given our staffing issues right now, that if we rush to open and bring everybody in, I think we're just going to close faster. And if we take the slower, steady route with the hybrid option and we keep everybody safe and a lot of precautions and the parameters that we need, I believe that that will keep us open longer and be a more sustainable option for education. There are additional remote options. So another sentiment that came through very strong in the initial survey was the parent guardian ability to have choice to send their children back to in-person instruction, which was something that we took very seriously and thought a lot about. So there are two options for parent choice. One would be a GVS Remote Academy, where we will offer through Grantham Village School the option for parents or guardians to access V-Lax online charter school. And GVS will provide a V-Lax facilitator or liaison to help you with this. We also hope that these students can still participate in other remote options with their class, if possible. I got a lot of questions this week about how many courses parents would have to sign up for on V-Lax and the answer is one. It's a minimum of one course. So there's two reasons why we would want you to go through V-Lax as opposed to, as opposed to homeschooling and we certainly respect both options. But if people choose to go through V-Lax through us and use our GVS liaison to work with you, there are two reasons. One is that we are acting under the assumption that when this pandemic is over, and we can't wait for that to happen, that all of these students will be coming back to GVS and coming back to this community. So that's a really nice way for us to make sure that we can involve everybody in all of these other activities and keep them part of the community and respect the parent choice to have them home at the same time. And a very practical reason is that for every student that decides to not do V-Lax and homeschool on their own, you actually would have to withdraw and we would not get that student's adequacy money from the state. So there's also a financial fiscal implication to homeschooling versus V-Lax as well. And I'll have those figures for you in a minute when we get to the budget section. Another option is a GVS remote classroom. So depending on the number of those actually returning to school, if we reach, for example, a 30 or 40% threshold of students in any given grade who choose to go remote, then what we would do is we would pull one of those grade-level teachers from GVS to run a remote school with that group because then we would still be able to have the number safely in school and then we could actually have that GVS teacher running a remote school. We have a range of 30 to 40% because the difference between a class of 30 and half of them going and a class of, you know, 48 and half of them going is a big difference with the number of students who are left in school. So whenever before have we felt that this is something where we absolutely need to be together in this community? This is, obviously, the school doing a lot on its part. The SRS committee has been phenomenal in working through a lot of these issues. But in this kind of a situation, which is a difficult situation, we need to be in this together and we need to rely on the community for a few things that we're going to call the three Rs. The first R we need from you is reliance. So we need to rely on all families to screen their children before sending them to us, to quarantine under our recommendations. We are going to ask that two weeks before school starts, our families, you know, we obviously can't check up on you, but we're going to ask that you start to practice as much as you can in terms of quarantining, healthy practices, limiting your contacts to be able to make sure that we can open schools safely. There'll be a daily screening via an app on the phone with a temperature check as well. The second R is reaction. We know that things could change at any time. We're going to be communicating with you constantly and we'll need you to respond and react with us. For example, is, could be quarantining, moving to remote, self-isolating, a variety of things. And responsibility. In any model, if additional childcare needs are required, and that could be for the in-person model or the hybrid model. It could be your own before and after-school care or it could be the days that you might need childcare because it would be days of hybrid. We have an amazing Grantham community. We really do. And we want to urge you to use this community and each other to arrange bubbles or zones or pods of your own to be able to help us minimize the spread. And it will also help minimize the spread, what comes in and out of the school and it really gives great information if contact tracing is ever necessary. I have gotten a lot of questions and concerns about people being, trying to get pods set up with retirees. I just want to say, just make sure that you're trying not to set up a pod with somebody who might be a high-risk individual because that could be a big concern for our community as well. So going into the budget implications, again, I put the green in where it's updated because we're continuing to get some more accurate quotes. If we're looking at the remote option, the increased cost would be $647.50. That would be if we go fully remote. If we go into a hybrid option, this is up from last week because we got a quote for a tent rental, which is about $10,000. So I, I actually was thinking, I called the National Guard actually to see if they would give us a couple of tents and help us set up because the National Guard has been really helpful. So we might be able to avoid that cost. It also might be cheaper for us to purchase the tent as opposed to that price tag for a rental. But because of that, the hybrid went up to about $24,304 in additional costs. If we do the in-person five days with all of the additional things that we would need, including desks, dividers, we would be turning everybody, every available space into a classroom. We would have to turn the gym, the cafeteria, the art, the music rooms and the library, absolutely every available space into a classroom. And moving and storage would have a higher percentage. And that also, that figure also includes the personnel that we would need to have at Coniston. So the nurse and the security guard and the custodian, extra custodian. That is included in that cost as well. So I talked earlier about the estimate of the adequacy loss due to homeschooling. So right now, according to our surveys, it looks like about 25 students are going to be homeschooled. And that's approximately $4,000 each. So that would affect us, not this year, because adequacy always goes one year ahead or behind, however you look at it. So that would be $100,000 that would go or fall back on taxpayers if, if that's the case. We do have a pretty high uncertainty of substitutes with these models. I've estimated an additional $40,000 to $80,000 based on these models and substitutes. The range is because I figured, not a lot of people out each day. I figured four people out each day, but there's a difference. If somebody really is out long-term, we have to have a long-term sub, which has a much higher rate than a daily sub. So the range could be anywhere from $40,000 to $80,000 for what we would need. And then I've had a couple of questions about our tuition that we pay to Lebanon and that is completely dependent on how many people continue to enroll in the middle and high school or how many people up there are going to choose to homeschool. And we won't know that for a little while yet.
Is Lebanon offering V-Lax?
They're rolling out their plan tonight, so I'm not exactly certain what their plan is for that. Where we're going to find this money in our current budget. So I just wanted to be really transparent about the places where we could actually find some money in our budget. From wages, we have about $55,000 available. That's because of people who left and people we hired. We actually saved money with some new hires. For enrichment, that would be $20,000 because right now, we're not doing field trips. New furniture and fixtures, $8,000. In the spring, we very intentionally didn't order anything because we're so much uncertainty with our situation that we left that money available for just such a time as this. Special education summer tutoring, we were able, able to cover $5,000 of this in a grant. Special education elementary tuition, we had a court placement student that cost about $50,000 and that student is no longer in court placement. So that's a savings that we can have. Speech services, we moved from an employee to contracted services. And so we're in contracted services. That saved the district about $25,000. Library books, just a possibility because we don't know what the model is and we don't know if we're going to be doing eBooks or physical books. Like we just estimate that there might be some cuts there. Our audit, we changed auditors and got a better contract, so we saved $1,500 there. Building administrative contracted service, that would be something that would be our new principals' fund for contracted service. We would just cut that in half. Building administrative postage, we have $3,100. We had money left on the machine last year. We do a lot of mailings towards the end of the year and because we were remote and we weren't sending any paper home, we saved money there and the money is still available on the machine. Buildings and grounds renovation, we had allotted $7,500 to strip the parking lot and we would just hold off on that, obviously, because that can wait, given our circumstances. Buildings and grounds furniture, $5,000, the same thing. We didn't order anything because we didn't know what was going to be happening with our situation. And we had $3,500 allotted to bus field trips and since there are no field trips, that money would be available. So that's about every place that we could find money in our current budget. Part of our plan was looking at the calendar and the start date. The committee and I would recommend that we move the start date to the New Teacher Day, which would be August 25th and that we would have six teacher days after that. The governor has granted all schools an additional three days to start the year because we are all in a difficult situation of figuring out how to start. I don't think it matters which model you're starting with. It's going to be hard. We need that extra time. The start date would be September 3rd. If we're going hybrid, we would recommend that September 3rd would be where group A comes in and September 4th would be where group B comes in. But we would like to have those kind of be soft opening days because we need training days. We need training days with kids, parents, teachers to say, these are the protocols for how you're coming in school. These are the routines that you're going to follow. This is the door that you need to go in. These are the things that are going to happen in your classroom and that's going to be very important to be able to have that time with the kids to make sure that they feel comfortable and know exactly what to do coming in. There's the potential, if the board chooses the full-in-person option, that we may need two professional development days moved to the third week in October because if people are at Coniston, we're really going to need at least two days to be able to bring everybody back and, you know, reconfigure the school and do everything that would happen with that. When students are in school, we would be looking at the cohort model, like I talked about earlier. Students would not be able to share objects or desks. All students will remain in their classroom with no shared spaces. Specialists would have to push into classrooms because we can't have, and they would probably stay with a couple of grade levels for two weeks because we can't put our specialists at risks, at risk having them bounce around to a lot of different groups. We'll be able to track movement patterns throughout the day and we will map them and control them. Lunch will need to be eaten in classrooms or outside, so we're hoping that we can have places to eat outside. Certain grades will be assigned to certain bathrooms, again, so we can do contact tracing and, you know, if something happens, we don't have to immediately close everything. We might be able to isolate certain spaces. And drop-off and pickup procedures would be designed to maintain physical distancing. So parents, guardians would not be able to walk children into school or to gather for a pickup. We would just need to be doing bus and car drop-off and pickup. In terms of quarantine and testing, the symptoms of COVID-19 in children are different. And I know that this presents a lot of concern for parents about their children being sent home and I certainly understand that. But all of these are defined by the CDC as symptoms of COVID-19 in children. And we know that children have a lot of these symptoms. Last week at the parent forum, I mentioned that DHHS is working on a flow chart and I did see a draft of it today, but it's not public yet. But they're working on a draft of what this is going to look like for school nurses to say. of what this is going to look like for school nurses to say, this is when somebody goes home, this is when they self-isolate, this is when they quarantine, this is when they need 10 days, this is when they need 14 days. I would really love to be able to explain that to all of you right now, but I'm going, I have to wait until the Department of Health and Human Services releases that as their final draft, because it's right now just being reviewed by that committee and our school nurses. I do want to talk a lot about social emotional learning because this was a whole subcommittee on our group and incredibly important. So regardless of any model chosen, GVS is committed to prioritizing the social and emotional needs of our children. We're going to begin the year with the Choose Love program, which is sponsored by the state of New Hampshire. It has a specifically-designed curriculum around now, around how you return to school in a pandemic. And we're excited about that program, and we're excited about how we can work with our staff and families with that program. In terms of meals, regardless of any structure we have, Grantham will continue to provide meals for all GVS students on the Free and Reduced Lunch program. And transportation has been a big issue. On the survey, only about 10% of our families said they would absolutely need transportation. So our current parameters with our student, our bus company, is there's a request to use hand sanitizer before getting on the bus, but hand sanitizer will not be provided on the bus. It is too much of a safety hazard. It is a fire hazard. It could be a projectile. They have said absolutely no to having any hand sanitizer that they provide on the bus. We're going to request that everybody maintains social distancing and stands six feet apart at the bus stops. All riders must, and this is a must, wear masks on the bus and sit in assigned seats. We have a maximum of 24 students per bus, but it's possibly more because siblings are allowed to sit together. So it could be more if you have more than one child who needs the bus. They are allowed to sit in the same seat. I have asked about getting an additional bus and additional driver. The answer is that there is little to no hope right now of getting an additional bus and additional driver. Again, last year, in a really normal year before all of this happened, it's even very difficult to get drivers around the state, certainly not just here. Bus transportation will likely be need and priority-based. That's how we're going to have to start. We will hope that we will be able to accommodate everybody's needs, given this current situation. I'm not exactly sure that that's true, but if it really is 10% of families who absolutely need transportation, I think there's a chance we could make it work. I just wanted to let the board know that SAS testing and other assessments, the commissioner has mandated those for the fall, so that we will still have to do the fall SAS interim assessment. And our staff will be using their own classroom assessments to find where students are with their learning, especially after last spring. So we really want to know where kids are and where we can start with them and how we can get going. In terms of next steps after the board makes a decision, families are going to receive an online form to determine the official commitment of your child's plans for the first trimester. We do have to note that changes in plans will require a mandatory waiting period, at least a two-week quarantine, possibly more, and may not be honored. If we are maxed out someplace, if we absolutely don't have the space, you know, we need to have you make a decision for that first trimester and work with us from there. All families will receive a separate form with bus transportation requests, so that will be a separate one. We are going, usually at this meeting in August, we have the board approve the bus routes. All of the bus routes are going to have to be redesigned based on prioritizing bus transportation. And then looking at seating assignments. And thank you very much for your patience. I do want to say another incredible thank you for the hard and important work of the SRS committee. They are an unbelievably dedicated group. Every single one of us spent a lot of sleepless nights and heartache and thought going into presenting what we think is going to be best for GVS, and that is our recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Sydney. We are just going to figure out our echo. Hang on, just, okay. All right. So, thank you, Sydney. We appreciate it. And I do want to just, we did have a question about who the members of the SRS committee were, and I just wanted to recognize and thank the members of the committee who were Astrid Berger, Randy Britton, Arlene Brown, Leslie Brown, Denise Buckman, Madeline Crudo Burke, Karen Islander, Marcia Gugans, Sam Hutchins, Cara Johnston, Sidney Leggett, Karen Lassard, Brenda Malloy, Ian Pollard, Kristen Reed, Casey Sylvain, Scott Taylor, Lynn Wallace, Jen Wallstrom, and Chris Widman. So for folks not familiar with them, that's a very thorough cross-section of folks from within the school community, administrators, teachers, paraprofessionals, you know, additional teachers, facilities, our, our school counselor, all sorts of folks. So that is the, the SRS team that put this together for us. So we did have some more questions and comments come in during Sydney's presentation, and I do want to hold off on addressing those because I would like to work to have the board be able to start opening up the conversation for what the board needs to discuss. And hopefully, during our conversation between us and Sydney, we'll be able to maybe answer some of those questions that came in. And if not, we will certainly address them during our second public comment period later this evening. So I want to open it up, and I want to let the board begin our discussion and deliberation over these options. One thing that I just wanted to mention, I know board members have had individual conversations with Sydney throughout this process. If you raised a question with Sydney and you got an answer that, you know, gave you some piece of information that was not presented tonight, I would really encourage you, you don't necessarily have to rehash the entire conversation, but please just give us the spirit of the question and the conversation that you had, because I think those are really valuable for us to have out in the open with each other. And also, it may be a question that one of us hadn't thought of. So if there's a question that you did discuss with Sydney or with anybody else that was part of the SRS group, please bring the, you know, that forward to us now. And then, of course, additional questions for Sydney or for each other as we move this forward.
I did have a couple of questions. One is, when kids are in school with either model, will they be able to use technology as usual when they're in school?
Britneys, and I'm hoping that this will work. Yes, they will be able to use technology because they, we do have enough devices where each student would be able to have his or her own device. So we wouldn't have any, we wouldn't have any problems there. And in fact, I can tell you from the SRS committee's perspective, they're looking forward to having kids back initially, because if at some point we need to get remote or go remote, we have a really good opportunity to establish all of the technology routines and plans with them. Can somebody tell me if that sound was okay with my answer? Okay, thank you.
And second question, when you gave the cost numbers, I assume that included extra cleaning, supplies, services?
Yes, that included all of the masks, PPE that we would need, gowns, it's kind of a long list, desk dividers, a plexiglass divider for the front office, extra personnel, internet connectivity at Coniston. We included everything in there.
I'd like to just ask the board if, if it would be a good idea to take each of the two options and then maybe ask our questions about that, just so we I'm wondering if we should look at both options individually, well, start, starting with all of the children in option A, and then center all of our questions around that, and then move on to the hybrid. Because I have questions on both sections, and I don't know the best way to go about asking.
Okay, so we're going to focus, the board is going to focus looking at the five-day return option first, and talk through some questions. And I think Sydney did a really nice job of outlining, you know, those major questions, you know, the, the benefits and the challenges that would come with that. So what are some of the questions that folks have? Sydney, could you put back up the numbers of the children that would be returning the pie chart? Because the one I have doesn't have the actual numbers. It just has percentages. That was my first question.
From the poll this last week?
Yeah, because the one I have doesn't have the numbers down the bottom like you added to this presentation. Yes, so the in-person was 190 students. And then, could you, just while we have them up, could I see the, the hybrid one too? So some of my questions about the going back five full days, you mentioned the classrooms being emptied out. What does that mean?
Basically, what that would mean is we would have to take, in order to do that, we would have to take absolutely everything out of the classroom. Every bookshelf, every storage thing, everything, to be able to fit all of the students in here. And I know that we're talking about other space, too. I'm really not as worried about space in the big picture. I'm much more worried about staffing. But in terms of looking at the classroom, of having everybody back, we would have to basically empty it out. It would be a pretty big undertaking.
But they would have desks and tables and chairs?
They would have desks and a chair. No tables, because tables, unless somebody is sitting alone at a table, or unless it's an incredibly long table where we can do the social distancing.
And if, I know there's concerns about staffing. So I know we don't need to get into the weeds or specifics, but is there a feeling that if we go five full days, that will actually make a difference with teachers wanting to return over the two?
I can't speak to that specifically with specific information, but I, I do know that staffing is personally my biggest concern. Because, like I said, we want staff to make good decisions. And, you know, so far, I know of at least four staff members that need to quarantine because they need to travel out of state before school starts. So I know that right off the bat, we would be starting, without anybody being sick or having a sore throat, I know that we would be starting four staff members down.
And then my last question was about that Mathematica study where they said, when it's full day, that we have a chance of five children testing positive. Where did that come from?
They did statistical modeling based on, they did it for the state of Pennsylvania, and they did modeling on classrooms, and they did all different sorts of parameters, three feet, six feet, hybrid, you know, full class, et cetera, et cetera. And that's where they came up with all of those models. So it's, it's mathematical modeling. It's not an actual thing that happened. But I think that their, their modeling is really interesting because basically they, you know, if you just look at statistics, and if you look at, think, try and picture in your brain contacts between kids. So if you have, you know, 20 kids in a class, imagine how many contacts they have versus 10 kids in a class. And imagine being the staff member who's trying to control all of those contacts. It's, I think it's, it makes a significant difference. The other thing, sorry, I'll wait to talk about hybrid until we get to that section.
The other questions I have are more just general, would pertain to either. Should I keep going? Or, yes, okay. The busing to Lebanon, that 10% that we roughly think, does that include the Lebanon children, or is that just GVS?
That includes Lebanon. That was from this first survey. So that included all parents pre-K through 12, and we still came to about 10%. I am really hoping that we'll be able to accommodate the people who said that they absolutely need, absolutely need transportation if that 10% is true.
And then the app. One point, it mentions temperature check. Another point, it mentions about just doing a general survey. Are parents going to have to do a temperature check?
Yes, they're going to have to do both. So each morning, we're going to ask parents to take their child's temperature and answer the screening questions on the app. It will probably take a total of maybe three minutes at the most in the morning. But there's research on how just a temperature check or just a screening might not be effective, but both, the temperature check and the screening, can help people to make better decision-making about whether or not they should send their child to school.
And how will that be handled if a parent doesn't do it?
Well, we're going to check again when students get to school. We're going to do temperature checks when students are entering the building. We're not going to do the full screening. And I think I would go back to the first R, and I would rely on this community. And neighbors are going to have to trust each other. Parents and guardians in the community are going to have to trust that other people won't be sending their kids to school knowing that they might have a slight fever, or knowing that they have a cough. We really are, as a community, going to have to understand that this is not just you sending your kid to school. This is a potential of affecting a larger whole community.
So there'll, there'll be a temperature check for every child when they come in, too?
Yes.
That's, that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Could I ask a follow-up? Will there be similar health checks for faculty and staff?
Yes, staff will have to use the same screening app, and we'll expect them to take their temperature and complete the app every morning before coming to work also. We won't be taking their temperature when they come in, though.
I just think we need to project through the mask. It's really hard to hear. I think it's more in the room than on the mask. All right. Yeah, Denise. And Denise, you're, yep.
So I'd like to actually tag on to your last question about the
Denise, you're going to have to use your very best stage voice.
I want to follow up on the temperature checks. This is an app, and I would assume there's going to be some way to have HIPAA privacy, so things are not shared. Who sees this information?
We would have somebody at the school see the information. We haven't decided who that person is going to be because we don't want to overwhelm our school nurse. But yes, it would all be under privacy laws, and the app would be considered private. So it would only be somebody who would be a confidential employee anyway.
My next question about the temperature, again, is who will be taking temperatures?
It's going to have to be a duty that's outside as people come in. And depending on where they're going, we will have to have people who are assigned on duty in the morning to do a quick temperature check for the children before they enter the building.
So would this require extra protection for the staff member who's doing this?
Probably not full PPE, but we've talked, I need to talk to the staff more about what kind of PPE they want, but we will be providing a variety of PPE. And as long as we have the three-ply surgical mask and gloves, they should be fine.
I was just at my, at doctor's appointment, and there was a person, as you walked into the building, and she was wearing a mask and a shield, and she was doing the temperature checks.
Yeah, I'm glad you said that because I should have included the face shield or goggles because eye covering is also very important.
Still on hybrid A. So my assumption, and correct me if I'm wrong, if we have 25% or fewer parents who choose to homeschool or use remote classroom, not remote classroom, V-Lax, would that automatically mean that we can't offer option A because we would have too many children in the building?
So right now, I think we're maxed at the 190. Our limit would be 200. So we're within 10 of what our absolute max would be for being able to have everybody back in person. We're, we're 10 students shy of what our maximum would be.
A couple of people have said asking if we take the slide down because they can't see us, our faces.
Thank you.
Sydney, did you also see, you probably didn't see the question come in, why are the staff excluded from the onsite temperature checks?
I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
Someone asked, why are the staff excluded from the onsite temperature check?
Well, we are adults and responsible adults, and we're going to trust that our teachers are professionals and that if we ask them to take their temperature each morning and report it, that they will do that.
Other questions from the board for looking specifically at the five-day-a-week plan for students? Yeah?
What if the Camp Coniston seat area doesn't work well? And then you have all of these children who have to go somewhere suddenly?
Yeah, that would be a big problem because it would take us a while to configure the school. There's a serious backlog of equipment. You know, people just can't manufacture it fast enough. So if something did happen there, we would be scrambling, to be honest.
I just wanted to ask about substitutes. In the five-day, everybody comes back. Kind of what's the usual number of potential substitutes you kind of have on a list? And do you think you'd have that full cohort of people available?
Yeah, we did poll our substitutes. We usually have about 12 who are on the list. We've gotten confirmation that three will return. We are hoping that if we do need substitutes, there might be some college students who are home doing remote learning. So I'm just going to take this opportunity to put that out there, that if you have somebody at home who might be interested in subbing and who is not a high-risk individual, that we would be looking for substitutes in any scenario that we're open.
So I'd like to ask about substitutes. Many substitutes work in several buildings, which would mean many more exposures coming back to our building. Have you thought about how that will impact our substitute selections?
Yeah, we have that listed as one of the bigger disadvantages of the full in-person because it would be a higher need for substitutes. We wouldn't have the flexibility to be able to cover things ourselves within the building. And that it could represent that there's more risk of that person than what he or she may be bringing into the building.
Actually had one more question, I'm sorry, that went back to the general questions. I know that the volunteers and all that are not, I forget where it wasn't here, are not going to be recommended. And I know the CDC is saying to have guidelines around that. But wouldn't that make more sense than having strangers from all over the Upper Valley coming in than the parents that actually are with the children, helping these teachers?
So are you asking if we can have parent substitutes?
Parent substitutes or parents helping the teachers in scenarios where there may be need for help? Just, I guess I don't understand the thought process when these children are with these parents and the parents are with the children, the children are with the children. They're all in one cohort. Why are we going to discourage that?
Well, anytime, parents are working everywhere and every place. So it's the, I think it would be a similar risk as a substitute coming in, you know, from someplace else. Is that what you're saying? Would there be a difference in the risk of a parent coming in versus a substitute?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I think there would probably be a similar level of risk unless the parent who's coming in is quarantining at home.
And I think some of the, maybe what you're looking at too, Jody, is the like closed campus was limiting people coming in. And I think some of that is just about limiting traffic and limiting movement. So the less, I mean, that was one of the considerations, you know, frankly, for having our meeting in person is, you know, we certainly, I felt like it was important for us to do this. But the other side of that coin was limiting gatherings of people here. And so I think some of that isn't necessarily about exposure level, but more about just in terms of traffic through the building. And every, because we are a small school with a limited staff, every additional person we have in the building means more in terms of cleaning and, you know, you know, other things that we may have to be aware of. And so it would be more like, you know, optional parent volunteers coming in to do reading help or, you know, sorting books in the library, that kind of stuff. Not as much of a mandatory substitute kind of a position that would be looking to be limited now. Eliminated, yeah, yep.
A substitute would be somebody that we absolutely essentially had to have in. So we're basically trying to eliminate all non-essential traffic in the building, visitors.
Will we need additional custodial staff to do the extra cleaning?
I believe that we will if we're full in-person. Definitely, we would not if we're hybrid because they would, with fewer studios and a Wednesday flex day, they would have the opportunity to be able to keep up on top of the cleaning and disinfecting. Scott Taylor always wants me to be sure that everybody remembers there's a big difference between cleaning and disinfecting.
Are there other? Yeah, and I do want to try, we are getting a lot of questions and comments in on here. And so I want to try to have a still focus board work. And so I think if it's very specific to a question, you know, that's going to really impact kind of the decision of the board, certainly. But we need to. What was that? Okay, perfect, thank you.
I get about 50 emails a day to be, to go over cleaning and disinfecting products. Those aren't my decisions. I rely on our facilities director to be able to choose what's going to be best and safest and most cost-effective for us. I, we haven't put anything out to bid, and I can certainly. For the school and the students. I don't think this, personally, from what we've run and what we've looked into, and I don't think disinfecting is going to make the difference in being able to open it up fully, like having absolutely everybody here, in my opinion. It doesn't come down to disinfecting, it comes down to staffing.
I think we need to, we'll move, I think that that's maybe a conversation you can follow up with Sydney on this. And I think we definitely, you know, our, the plans is presented to the board tonight, although. Jody, can you just, Jody was just commenting on our ability and products for cleaning.
We do, we do, it would just need an additional cost if we're full in-person.
If that's not what you were asking? I believe we do have those products. I think what Sydney was saying is more the staffing as far as the teachers, not the custodians would be the concern. Yeah, and we can definitely, I think if we can follow up with that information. But for tonight, I mean, what we have, that we have to put forward for the board conversation. Tonight, we are taking a vote on if it's the five-day in-person return or the hybrid remote option. Absolutely, and I think, I mean, I know from the.
And I'm going to tell you that in either model, we will be able to clean and disinfect the school.
Yeah, and what we need is the information that we have, that we have from her. And I've been in touch with Scott, our, you know, our facilities director, that he has what, you know, the products that he has reviewed and that they've brought forward to us at this point for us to make our decision. And we have to go with the expertise. Is that, is what?
Is what we use to clean public knowledge? Yes, it is.
Yeah, yep. So this is, I think this is a very granular conversation that we need to, we need, there's many other pieces than just the cleaning and disinfecting that are going into our decision-making. And we have the information that the board needs and the conversation that we need to have to move forward. So we do have to move off of this point, at this point. Absolutely. Oh, yeah, we can definitely share. No, we do know, we do know, we do know the products, what the products that we're currently using are. So we can certainly try to get that information before the end of the meeting. And we can certainly see if we can reach out to Scott to get the information that we need for that. But that is, a lot of pieces of this puzzle are information that we need to know from our staff that what they're using is the appropriate recommendation. And we have.
Having a cleaning business myself, I could not rattle all the materials off of my head. So I think that Sydney doesn't want to mislead you by naming materials that we may not be currently using. So I do think it's best that we know what we're saying before we start telling you what we're using.
So, so, and we do need to move our conversation forward from this. We can certainly get information, more information to you that might help you feel, you know, more informed about what we're using. We can certainly get that information. But we do need to move forward beyond just the conversation of the cleaning products. And I. Yes.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, we have, we have absolute trust. I mean, that's a, we have trust that he has reviewed and knows what products that we are using. So we'll move our conversation forward to.
Mr. Taylor has been part of a facilities directors group from the state of New Hampshire that he attends every Friday. And they get updates from the state, from Dr. Chan, from DTHS, from DOE, from everybody. He's incredibly well-informed. I don't have any concern about him choosing the right product for us.
Okay, so we'll move our conversation forward if there were additional questions for the five-day-a-week. Okay, let's move the conversation now for the board to looking at questions specific to the hybrid model.
So I do, I have a question right out of the gate, and I've seen it a couple places here today also, or tonight, about the capacity of V-Lax. And I had sent this along to Sydney as well. People have been looking into it on their own, and it would appear that there are classes that are waitless. So there's some questions about capacity that I think are obviously important to this conversation about hybrid options.
Yep, we've been trying to get in touch with V-Lax. I can't honestly say, the V-Lax presentation was that they have just hired 52 new teachers and that they will have a full curriculum K through 12. I know that there are waitlists, but I don't know if that just means that they're still building their capacity for this program, that it's still coming, and that's why there's a waitlist, or if there are actually waitlists for classes. We have not been able to distinguish which one of those is the correct answer. I can tell you that from their presentation, they have, they've hired a lot of people and that they intend to have, you know, to be able to meet the capacity that New Hampshire is looking for right now. And that's, that's all the information that I can give specifically about those waitlists at this point. I did send that question out to other local superintendents today, and they know what I know.
And so Sydney, I just, I'm asking as a clarifying question. The V-Lax part is inextricable from the hybrid offering, right?
I wanted to have one caveat to that, though. Like, there's always parents who might want to do an extra V-Lax. I did that with my own kids. You know, we're certainly not going to stop anybody from doing that if they want to do that.
Hybrid question. How does the Monday holiday affect the cleaning between the groups as well as what the staff usually needs to do on the Wednesday when it's gone that week?
Those would be harder weeks for all of our staff. And we did talk a little bit about that, but it would be important to make sure that we didn't have students who were regularly losing that Monday instruction.
Another question on the hybrid. If all of the students who are choosing hybrid to start, or let's say there's 95, what if it's not a good experience and parents want to move their children to V-Lax? Is that possible?
Yes, V-Lax is very flexible. We asked a lot about that, if people can come in and go out. And the answer to that was yes. And we also thought, you know, what if we have a lot of students on V-Lax and then, you know, we are allowed to just open up as usual, something wonderful happens with, you know, COVID? And can everybody just transition back to school? And the answer was yes, and they would help us do that. And then our V-Lax liaison would help parents make that transition too. The nicer thing about V-Lax in that situation is if we have a liaison with them, hopefully, the kids would already have been maybe doing things with their classmates when we're able to make that happen so that they don't feel like it's such a shift going from being disconnected to the school to going right back in. I did want to say one thing that I didn't say in my presentation, which is, one of the survey polling information pieces that I thought was interesting was that more parents would send their students to school in a hybrid than in the full in-person model. And I thought that was interesting to note, too.
On the days, on the days where a group is doing remote instruction, that's not going to be the regular classroom teacher. So who might that person be?
We're hoping to have that be staff members who might not be able to come back to school because of their own high-risk conditions. That would be the ideal situation. I don't know if that map will work out exactly, but we are hoping to be able to provide that opportunity to some of our staff who are at high risk. And paraeducators too, who are excellent with technology might be a really good fit for that as well.
Is that true for the Wednesday all-remote program too? Or is that can be something different?
We need time, the SRS committee talked about how the full staff together on our opening days needs more time to talk about what Flex Wednesday would actually look like because it was used for, it was Friday last year. But it was used for a variety of different things. So one of the things that we learned is that there would be, it would be better if we all get together and if we can actually have more consistent guidelines about what happens on that Wednesday. We know that certain things are going to happen. We know that that's the only time that teachers are going to be able to do INP meetings, 504 meetings, collaboration with other teachers, individual student check-ins, you know, maybe some reteaching. But we also sort of brainstormed. But we also sort of brainstormed some other things that could happen on that day. It could be a great day to have the whole class together remotely if we are hybrid. It could be a nice time to focus on some of our social emotional learning kind of things. You know, there could be a lot of other things that we can really do to improve that Flex Day.
Jody, did you have a question?
I think it was just answered.
Other questions or, at this point, thoughts from the board on the hybrid model? Sydney, I know you and I had a conversation, and I think it's, and I'm sure this, you know, is, is something that has come up in some of the questions and is on people's minds about the logistical differences between a hybrid model where students are going out into pods and potentially interacting with folks outside of the community versus five days a week here where there's a more controlled environment, you know, where perhaps, you know, there's the potential for, you know, decreased exposure to other individuals. And I know you and I had a conversation about that, and that question has come up, and I was just wondering if you could talk a little bit about kind of your thoughts on that.
Yeah, we looked into that pretty significantly, because we thought that that was, and we listed that as a risk factor for the hybrid option. But then we were looking at some of the feedback we were getting about childcare from our families who need to work. And they would likely be accessing childcare either before or after school and both in the five-day model. And we're not really, well, we, we weren't convinced with what we were seeing about that, about the need for childcare, that, that that kind of childcare situation or where they are on the weekends would actually completely counter the controlled cohorts of the five days a week. In addition, we're also hoping that, you know, we really do ask people that they choose pods and that they choose zones and that they choose very responsible, regular childcare options. And most families do choose very consistent childcare options whenever they can. And to try and keep that consistent with the same, you know, you would obviously, if you're sharing, you'd be sharing with the people who are in the same cohort, because they would be going on the same days as you. A couple of questions came up last week at the parent forum about trying to make requests with people that they do share, that they already share daycare with, and we would encourage you to make those requests. We can, we will have a space for that on the forums when they go out, if we are doing hybrid. And there's a couple of advantages to that. We may not have an equal balance completely in A through L and M through Z, and it might be mutually beneficial, you know, to have you make those requests, and then we know that maybe we do have the opportunity to move some families around. And also, it's going to be much better, if something ever comes this way, that we have the ability to do contact tracing, where we know exactly what kind of childcare situations people have been in, and hopefully that they are that consistent pod.
I just have two general questions, not connected to either model. So as I think about teachers needing space to use machines, they have shared machines that they need to do their jobs. How are we going to keep these available to them? And can they be disinfected so that they're safe for staff members to use?
Are you talking about like our copy machine and those kind of things? Yeah, we're going to have to work pretty hard on what those protocols are going to be. We haven't defined those yet, but, and we'll work with Mr. Taylor, with our school nurse, and with some more of the DHHS guidance that's coming out. There could possibly be gloves, it could possibly be disinfecting wipes. But yeah, those, we will probably eliminate the staff, like lunchroom, because we really, unfortunately, won't be able to have a place where staff can gather, unless maybe under the tent outside, you know, hopefully. We can use those outside spaces, but we will have to figure out very specific protocols for the copy machine, the mail machine, all those common things that people are using. And it's like, going to the grocery store, in a way, everybody's using the credit card thing. Because I'm looking at those universal precautions that everybody has to make right now.
And the second question, I'm sure many people are wondering, are we going to ask our children to be masked? And how can we enforce that?
Yes, mask was a definite recommendation from the committee. And we expect that all children of all ages will be masked, and that we feel that that is absolutely the best way that we can keep our whole community safe. There will be certain, and we know that for some kids it will take getting used to, and, you know, they might need, prefer one mask over the other, we understand that. But there also might be some students with IEPs or 504s who truly have difficulty. And we're going to have to work with those students and their caregivers on a case-by-case basis on how to keep everybody safe. We still have some students who require toileting in schools, and we know that fecal matter is a big, you know, big carrier of COVID. Extreme, extra precautions are going to have to be taken in all kinds of situations like that. So we'll be looking at each of those cases and taking the safest route, to be honest.
I'm going to go ahead and jump in and share, really rip the Band-Aid right off. Because I'm really torn between the feeling that I'd like to support all, as many kids being in school as many days as possible out of the gate. And I hear that the recommendation is more oriented towards hybrid, and I see the upsides of that, not the least of which is the cost benefit. So I'm sitting here feeling quite torn between what I feel is going to look, and even though maybe it won't look as much like school, it will feel the most like school to the kids of being here more days, being with their teachers, I might cry. Versus like a hybrid model, which, oh, I don't know, I don't, I'm not feeling like a real pull to the modeling that I'm hearing. And I went and I looked at the, like, I'm not questioning their methods, I think they're good. But I feel like there's so much that we still don't really know about COVID and how to model it, that I, it gives me some pause about some assumptions we're making about what hybrid will and will not result in. So I almost feel more of a pull to like a strong out-of-the-gate, everyone wear a mask, we're in this together, clean this place like crazy. And, and I think that, to me, I'll speak personally, that presents the greatest specter of some like psychological health within my family. So I'm really, I'm very torn as a board member between these two poles of irrational approach that feels very well thought out by a lot of people that are experts beyond my thinking. And then the mom part of me, knowing what we've all been through and how much I love GVS and how much, I actually don't care if my, if Barrett sits in an empty classroom. I literally could care less, as long as there's a teacher that Mrs. McFarland that he knows, and some of his friends sitting on the floor six feet away, I think that will be huge. So I'm just, I feel, I felt like I needed to kind of air out some of the parent things that I've talked to, talked to my friends about and that I've been thinking about personally, and share some of like the, maybe the agony of the two sides.
Leslie, I feel the same way, and same thing. I've been, the last two days, my cellphone, my email's been blowing up with people that want to talk about this. And, and I'm feeling the same way that, you know, you, you go back to data and facts and stuff, and I, I feel like, why aren't we just opening out of the gate? I mean, the CDC talks over and over about the importance of opening up schools safely, and we have everything in place to, or we will have everything in place to do this safely, but I'm really torn myself about that as well. It's been agonizing the last few days thinking about this.
Yeah, I really appreciate both of you kind of just stepping out, like you said, ripping the Band-Aid off of it. I think one of the pieces for me that I think about a lot is taking the guidance of what Sydney said about staffing. I think if we go five days a week and we lose staffing, then we have nothing. Then no one gets to be here, and that's a really big concern for me. I think we are right on that line of having the staffing we need and without the guarantee that we'll be able to get subs. Or even, you know, tiptoeing towards a guarantee of it, that's a really big concern to me, because I think it could be very disruptive to tell our kids they're going back five days a week, and then in reality have it be a couple of days, and then a couple of days out, because there's no teacher, and then a couple of days back in, and then a couple of days back out, because there's no teacher. And that would also be very disruptive to parent scheduling. And I think, you know, just looking at, that's one of the pieces for me that really has, has started to, I, same thing, as both of what you guys have said, same exact experience. But one of the things that started to tip that scale for me is knowing and that Sydney has run so many calculations and so many scenarios of what do we do if our staffing, if we don't have the staffing?
Jody, I just want to, I wish I could look at you, but I'm having to talk this way. It's awkward, to say the least, to be honest. Especially because on two different screens, you can see me in different directions, and I don't like that. But I do want to respond that, to the CDC, that we should open. And there really is a belief in the committee that we should open. I don't think anybody debates that. One of their biggest recommendations for opening is the concern about students who are home and lose food and social services and, you know, mental health services. Grantham, and especially Grantham Village School is small enough where we can still take care of those children. We are not in a huge urban environment where we're going to lose kids. I can tell you that, you know, we, we literally, I'm not kidding, we drive to people's houses if we think that we're losing them, and we, we check on them and we call in. And I do think that our, you know, everything has to be community-specific. And I do know our cases are low here, and I think everybody accepts that. But I also believe that, that we don't have that kind of high-risk population that people are talking about nationally. You know, we are going to be able to make sure that we take care of every one of our GVS students, and we do that really well.
And Sydney, I know that there's certain parameters that we have to follow for how many staff we do have to have. Do you, do you know those or have those? For like, what is the number of adult bodies we need in the building?
I don't know if I can pull them up right now, but when I did the full in-person, we had zero flexibility with staff if anybody's out. And then with the hybrid model, we had flexibility of four people who could be helping with remote instruction and our specialists actually being specialists instead of being another body in a classroom, because we need them for that group of students.
So if I understood you correctly, we'd be pulling from the teachers working on remote if we had teachers out in the classrooms? Did, I'm not sure if I understood what you just said correctly. Would we be pulling from the teachers that are doing remote learning to put them in the classrooms if classroom teachers aren't here?
It depends on if it's a high-risk individual who can't come to the school, because then they're home no matter what. But with this model, we would have some flexibility, some, still a lot with paras and, and specialists to be able to provide some of our own coverage if we really get desperate and can't get our regular subs in. I know you're trying to keep it like more, really. I'm going to say one more thing. I do want to just say one thing. When I started this SRS committee, I was completely opposed to a hybrid. I thought that that was the worst option. And then we went through all the steps, we looked at all the models, we looked at the staffing numbers, the kid numbers, the parent feedback and everything. And, and I became pretty clearly convinced, in my opinion, that this was what we should recommend to the board. I was actually happy to hear that I am still open-minded.
I just wanted to offer that a lot of the public doesn't know us individually, but I, I can't think of a more difficult decision that I've had to make that will impact my entire community. And I'm coming around to this with input from the community, with experience as a public school teacher, and with three children of my own that have come through the schools. And I would just like the community to know that we recognize it. There is not one working model that's going to work well for everyone. This is a very difficult decision. There is a lot of support in the community, but it takes an awful lot of, of looking through many lenses to figure out what is the best thing for our children? What's the safest thing? And how do we still keep our community together?
Sorry, the last question that came in about the four teachers being out, I didn't even really pick up on that. Are we able to open even with the new guideline or new dates you're suggesting? If we do anything, hybrid anything, if we're missing four teachers from the gate?
Yeah, I don't know, it already, I already know, and I did see a question in the chat, that the recommendation is a two-week quarantine for travel outside New England. So those are four people who are traveling outside of New England. I have confirmation from four employees who will be doing that. So I would have to, right out of the gate, have four substitutes available to be able to open school. Oh, no, in the hybrid, again, I have some flexibility where I can work with that. So that, that really is the key with hybrid, is that I would be able to move people. Half the students would be there, which means I can move people to different places where I need them.
There was, and there was a question here in the room about if the, if we lose staffing, does that mean the whole school closes versus just a specific class or classes?
Yeah, so the answer to your first question is, it came through pretty loud and clear from the initial survey, that parents were very opposed to having different grade levels attend on different days, because that's breaking up families, and that means parents who are trying to find childcare or work have some kids going to school and some kids not. So we heard a pretty resounding, please don't do that, from the community. So that was the basis for that decision. And I honestly don't have the answer for would I have to close the whole school or certain grades, because it's going to depend, it's honestly going to depend on the day. I think when we're looking at this COVID situation, and that people are going to have to go through quarantines, and we might have classrooms or grade levels that have to go through quarantine, I think that, again, that's going to go back to that flexibility, that at any given time, we might need to say, grade four needs to go remote for the next 14 days. And if we can keep everybody else in, if DHHS says that that's acceptable, then we will try and do that. But that's really going to be a case-by-case basis, depending on if we get something here.
Sydney, that kind of makes it sound like that Julie's question is clarifying that it's a little bit more of a micro decision than a macro decision, which is a key concern in a full in-person scenario. Because how you're describing it is like, let's say, a fourth-grade teacher needs to be quarantined in November, and her class is basically either remote or, you know, we have to come up with an option, or they're all quarantined, that whole class. But then everybody else who's still on their schedule can still be in school. I mean, it will depend on health outcomes, but I do think it's an important clarifying question about micro versus macro, so.
So I think that we heard a lot, we did get a lot of feedback on the survey about how remote teaching went. I can tell you that there wasn't a single GVS person who didn't pour their heart into doing their best last spring. But we also realized that if we go with any kind of remote instruction this year, we realize that the expectations will likely be different. We realize that we can learn, and we also realize that we're going to always try to do. do better. We got a lot of great feedback from you about the feedback that's needed about different ways to schedule assignments. Our teachers have had experience learning in remote and knowing the staff that we have, they're just going to work together and they're going to find out how to constantly improve on that. I just know they will.
Okay. Other questions or thoughts from the, the board that the board would like to break up either about either of the options or as you're making considerations? Okay?
Do we want to touch on special ed? I mean, I just think it might be worth reassuring that special, you just might say what you always say, Sydney, about special ed. I see a bunch of questions trickling in and I just, it might be worth reassuring before we do anything else. I know it's not really moving us closer to a vote, but I feel like it might be good.
Yeah, we plan on delivering special ed services according to every plan. That wouldn't change. That actually wouldn't even change if somebody decided to do Velax. We would, since they're still a GVS student, we would still be working with the family to be providing all special education services. The only thing that I said last week that I'll repeat again is that if your child has a para, we can't send paros to the home, you know? So the para support would have to be remote. I did talk to our special ed director, Madeline Crudo Burke, about the possibility of having students who need additional services come in, if we're in the hybrid, to come in for additional days for services. And again, that'll have to be on a case-by-case basis of what their services are, what their needs are and a lot of things like ability of transportation, ours and parents' and safety considerations and also the safety considerations of their providers too. If we have contracted service or related service providers, we have to take into consideration the best way to deliver those services as well.
Sydney, in the, the report that the board received for the continuity of learning plan, you talked about, just trying to find it, the progress monitoring working group? And can you talk a little bit more about what that, I think that will maybe answer some questions about as we move forward in either of these plans, what will that group be doing and who will make it on and all of that kind of stuff?
Can I steal that?
Yep.
I won't touch it, I promise.
I'll leave it right here.
But I do, one of the recommendations that I made to the board is that we have a progress monitoring working group that meets at least weekly. The people that I would recommend to be on that committee are board chair or designee, the superintendent, principal, two parent representatives, teacher representative, an education support personnel representative, the special education director, a DHHS consultation if appropriate, our school nurse, the facilities director and technology teacher leader and school counselor. And I know that sounds like a big group, but there's a lot of eyes that need to be on this and that we would meet weekly just to see, to check the numbers, to see how things are going, to do a regular progress monitoring assessment, to see what we need to do. People often talk about needing to watch when we go remote, but I also think it's equally important to say, we could be watching this and see if there are things that we could loosen up on or other things that we could, you know, other ways we could provide more time or provide more services. So I think this progress monitoring working group would be a good regular thing to have in, but then that would also be the group that would have to work with DHHS if we had a, a case. And this group would get together with that representative and decide on the levels of if we quarantine a classroom, a grade, a section of the building or the whole thing.
Thanks, I appreciate it. Additionally, from that, from the presentation and from our packet from Sydney, I'm curious if folks have thoughts on school calendar. So school calendar changes, that's one of the pieces that we'll need to look at as we make the, the decision and what our, our final vote is. So the recommendation being that we move the teacher day, the new teacher day to August 25th, the teacher days to August 26th, 27th, 28th, 31st, September 1st and 2nd, and then the first day of school would be September 3rd. Thoughts on, from the board on that? We've received so many things, perhaps I've, I've lost track of it, but do we have a mock-up calendar if we were to go hybrid, what that would look like with the changes?
We didn't create one because we're waiting for the decision, but that would come to you on August 18th for that meeting. So no matter what the decision is, the board will meet on August 18th and basically approve a continuity of learning plan that will be essentially a handbook, the way that we have our usual handbooks and everything will be in there for the way that we're going to operate this year. And we've started creating the bits and pieces of that that we can, but of course, we're waiting for this decision and some other guidance to come out from the state to be able to put in there some more exact information.
I did want to just mention, and I meant to mention this early in our conversation, but we also want to recognize and acknowledge that we are working with Lebanon as well, that this conversation, a lot of what you're hearing is a conversation that's focused on GVS, but the board recognizes and, and keeps at the front of our minds the fact that we do also serve and work with the students at the middle school and the high school. And so our decisions for, you know, working with those families will be driven and based on the decisions that are made by Lebanon, but we certainly are still aware of and wanting to, you know, work with those families and help them through their process. You know, that's, that's, I think unfortunately, our, the conversation has to focus very closely right now on what the opening plan for GVS is, but we know that Lebanon is going through this very same conversation right now as we are. And so our families should be hearing more information from Lebanon, but we will continue to communicate with our families for Lebanon Middle School and High School as those decisions are made there. Other thoughts or pieces that are going into the decision for board members? Other, you know, anything else that you're, that we're weighing that we can put out to talk with each other about to make this decision? Okay. Do we feel like we are, have the information that we need at this point to move forward with a motion and a vote on the continuity of learning plan? Okay. So I have not gotten a clear message from like our conversation. I think we've had good questions on this. What I'm going to do is put forward, what I would like the motion to be made is to put forward the recommendation. If anyone would like to change that motion, so the recommendation would be to adopt the hybrid model. If anybody would like to weigh in and change that or make a motion in a different way, feel free. And we will need a first motion for whatever our decision for the continuity of learning plan for 2020, 2021 is.
You need one of us to second it or propose a different motion?
So I would say let's, I would leave the motion. I would say we need to, I would need a motion to move forward with a hybrid model for continuity of learning, for the continuity of learning plan. So I'll either need a motion for that now or someone to propose a different. I know, this was a hard one, the hardest, I know.
Well, I would support a motion for the hybrid option.
So Christine, would you make a motion for hybrid option for continuity of learning plan for 2020, 2021?
Yes, so moved.
Okay, so we have a motion from Christine for the hybrid plan. And we have a second from Denise. So Denise was our second for the motion for the hybrid plan for the 2020, 2021 year. Any further discussion before we call for a vote? Okay, so we will take a roll call vote. Christine? And I'll just have you unmute just, yep.
Hi.
Denise?
Hi.
Leslie?
Nay.
Brittany?
Aye.
Jody?
Nay.
Okay, and we have the motion passes two to three. And so the motion is adopted for the continuity of learning plan for 2020, 2021 to be a hybrid model. All right, thank you, guys. This is a really hard decision, really hard work. I think the conversation reflects a lot of the conversation that I've been hearing in the community and have heard from folks. And this is one of those situations that we come up with where there is no answer that will work for everyone in every situation. There is only something that we will try our, our best to move forward with and we know that we will have to, we know that we're going to meet again on the 18th to look at what this plan will really look like. And we will, of course, be revisiting this as we move forward, as the program moves forward. So thank you, guys, for the conversation and the, and all of the consideration that you've given us. I know it's been a really challenging decision and thank you again to the SRS committee for their work on that. Okay, so our next discussion and action item on our agenda is the appointment of the first grade teacher. And so the name being brought forward is Lisa Dawn Guildwell. And this is a one-year appointment. And there was one thing I noticed in the packet that was sent, the, under offer of employment, it still has Astor Burger's name. I'm not.
We will fix that.
So just to amend, to amend the contract to reflect the name. And it was just under that offer of employment piece. Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so we need a motion to accept the appointment of the first grade teacher, Lisa Dawn Ledwell?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion from Jody and we need a second. And we have a second from Leslie and we will roll call. So Christine?
Aye.
Denise?
Aye.
Leslie? Brittany?
Aye.
And Jody?
Aye.
Okay, so we have a unanimous appointment of the first grade teacher. Thank you.
And everyone will love her, she's fantastic.
And thank you to Sydney and to Kristen for jumping into hiring in, in the midst of everything else we have going on. Okay, our next topic for conversation is voting at Grantham Village School. So Sydney, I'll turn it over to you for an update on that.
Sure, I've been having a few meetings with our supervisors of the checklist. I started to talk with, with all of you about that the last time we met. And they're in also a very difficult position with trying to design how everyone will be able to vote safely this year. And they've looked at all of the options. What they've asked is that the board would consider waiving their policy, our policy, to have voting done at the school. Our, our policy would currently prevent voting at the school because of political activity on school grounds. And the request would be that if we are at that time fully remote, so this wouldn't happen if we are still going in the hybrid, this would only be if there is, we are full remote and nobody's using the school. Everybody understands the, the risks that would be taking place if we were trying to have school and voting. So their request would be to waive the policy just for that specific circumstance to be able to allow the November voting at the school if we're fully remote. I don't know what's going to happen in September because that's coming up and hopefully we're opening a schedule, but I think it would primarily be November. I would be personally in favor of this just because it's not having a rally here, it's not saying a specific candidate is speaking here, you know, it's, it's an ability to use the building for tech, for people to exercise their right to vote in a safer, healthier way. And it's, it's one of those once in a, I think, once in a blue moon things because of the pandemic that this would happen.
Could you shed some light on what Chief Parsons said about why we can't do it there? At the town hall?
Well, it would be at the town hall and they're doing a lot of configuring. They actually did a tour of the SAU and the town hall last Wednesday and they have figured out ways to do it there. It's just that it would be much easier here because there would be more space, more indoor space. They wouldn't have to set up a drive-through through the town hall, there's more room for cars here. So it's not that they can't do it at the town hall, it's just that it's easier here.
And this is not something that we need to take action on tonight, it's more of just an update or?
I was, I was thinking it could be an action item. The only other thing that we could do is if we're remote and we're getting close to a voting time, you would have to call an emergency meeting. But if you want to wait and do it August 18th, that's still plenty of time. So if you want to just leave it till that night, then you can have time to think about it, of course.
So my consideration with this would be voting only. I don't feel like, I know we need to exercise our rights with signs and people, but I don't think that'd be appropriate at all here at the school. If that option was on the table.
I don't know the legalities around if we can prevent that. I, I'm not sure if we actually can legally prevent that kind of campaigning during, at a voting place. So that would be more of a question for the supervisors and Lori McCrory, but I can follow up with them on that.
I had the same thought, Jody, and that's, I think for me, I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily want to take action until we can have an answer on that piece of, will there be? Because I know right now in terms of law, there's a foot distance that people can be and if that would still be in effect, then we would certainly have people, you know, well within feet of the school that would be, you know, holding, holding signs and having those conversations. Yeah, I think that's a good question to have before we make a decision on that.
And so perhaps that we table this until we find out if we are even remote and this is even an option?
I would personally do it before just because I'm, I'm not sure if you're going to want to call an emergency meeting for this. So I can get back to Lori and try and clear up that part about campaigning and any other questions that you have and maybe see if she or the supervisors would be able to come on the 18th and just be able to talk to you about this as an option.
So let's, yeah, let's move that to the 18th.
Yeah, it seems to me we could, we could set a required distance for them to be away from the school, given it's an exceptional circumstance.
Yeah, we just need clarification on if we can do that officially. Because campaigns may be able to challenge that and hold the law up and say, no, the law says that we can be within 10 feet. Or what, that's, I'm just, I'm making up 10 feet. Yeah, so, yeah, let's get some more clarification on what we can request for that piece of it and we'll bring it back on the 18th. Okay, so our next item are the family, staff and preschool handbooks. And this is approving just the general handbook that would be in play whether we were in-person, hybrid, remote, anything. This is our, oh, no, this is the, this is a, this is a year if we were going back to normal handbook. And so questions or comments from the board on, and the changes were noted, I think the page was at the end of each handbook that had the noted changes. Okay, so we'll need a motion to approve the 2020, 2020, do we need each of them individually or can we do all three of them? Okay, the, in handbooks for the 2020, 2021, handbooks for family, staff and preschool. Okay, the, in, handbooks for the 2020-2021, handbooks for family, staff, and preschool.
So moved. I'm just waiting to see.
All right, so we have a motion from Leslie. And we need a second.
Second.
Second from Christine, and a roll call vote for this. Christine?
Aye.
Denise?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Brittany, aye. And Jody?
Aye.
All right, so the handbooks are approved. Our next action item is the revision and adoption and rescind of the policies relating to the changes to the Title IX policies.
So just quickly, there have been major federal changes in the regulations for Title IX and a heightened threshold for sexual harassment in particular. Because of that, it's requiring all public institutions to change their Title IX policies, which is why you're seeing them now. In addition, there's a, we have to, believe me, I would have left something out of this huge packet if we didn't have to have these now. But these, getting these started and in the process of approval is required by August 14th. So basically, there's a couple of changes specific to sexual harassment in terms of what can and can't be done during investigations with formal and informal resolution processes, the way that you have to run investigations, and who the decision makers are and who the appellate's are. So I'm going to sum it up very quickly that there's not much we can do about the regulations themselves because they're coming down from Congress. But the way, because GBS is so small, we really needed to figure out a system where we have people who are in the right roles for Title IX investigations when something does reach that threshold. So basically, what I'm recommending is that the way we design that is that our principal is going to be the Title IX coordinator, and also they recommend having the title of human rights officer so that it encompasses all nondiscrimination policies, whether they go through sexual harassment or other. And then, basically, we would have Madeline Crudo Burke, our special education director, as an investigator if there are student issues. My recommendation is that because we are so small, if we ever, and hopefully don't, but if we ever have a situation involving sexual harassment with an employee, that we always hire an outside investigator. I just don't think we have the capability or the size to have somebody in the district to do that kind of investigation if it involves an employee. And then because of that, because nobody can serve in the same true roles, then I, as the superintendent, would become the final decision maker, and then the board would become the appellate. So anytime somebody wanted to appeal my decision, they would go to you.
Okay, any thoughts or questions from the board on those Title IX policies? Yeah, Denise?
And so this could likely change with a new administration.
In a heartbeat. It could. We could be here three months from now rescinding all of these.
Okay.
As usual, I found some corrections, and I tried to keep it to the ones that I think are significant. On the first page, under statement of policy, this is, this is AC. The third line from the bottom of that paragraph, and laws statutes. Is that supposed to be laws statutes of the state of New Hampshire? This is AC, the first page, the paragraph under statement of policy, third line from the bottom of that paragraph.
Sorry, because I'm slow, moving right now. And you're under statement of policy?
Yeah.
Okay. And am I in the right place now, down here?
No, no, up in that first paragraph, under statement of policy.
Okay.
Third line from the bottom of that paragraph, where it says Title IX of the Education Amendments of 72 and laws statutes, which looks like it's hanging there. Is that supposed to be laws statutes of the state of New Hampshire?
I think it comes back to the end of that sentence where it says the state of New Hampshire.
Right.
Oh, okay, so all bets together.
So the updated is just that we put in there the updated 2020 regulations. So that's just the comma, it's separated in there.
Then in AC-AA-R, under section one definitions, the very bottom of the page.
Sorry.
Is it AC?
AC-AA-R. Section one definitions, the bottom of the page. Under discrimination or harassment, should it also include economic status? In the other policies, it did include that category.
In here, so I believe this is students, so I'm not really sure. I'm not sure if that's eliminated specifically because this is the student policy, but I will check with the, I'd rather just check with the attorney on that one.
Okay.
Is this one that we got language directly from? Yeah, so this is all language directly from the attorney, so we may not have answers to. We didn't write these.
These are just, we are required to have this language.
AC-AA-R. This is several pages in. It's G, determination of responsibility. Okay, somewhere the decision maker gets identified, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And, yeah, sorry.
And then on point two, under determination of responsibility, it says each party can ask limited written follow-up questions. Oh, maybe, it's like, what does that mean, limited? How limited?
Limited. Limited, that's one of the new thresholds that has to be met through.
Okay, and that's, that's some definition elsewhere?
Yeah. I do want to go back to the decision maker where you had asked about that because the attorney recommended that we keep those terms vague as opposed to the people's names because the positions or the people who are doing it might need to change at any time. So not even that we would put Sidney Leggett in there, but we might not even want to put superintendent in there. Because at any point if our structure changes, we just still need that specific role.
There was, I noticed there were a couple places where it did specifically say Kristen. Or those are.
That has to be there.
Got it.
And that's specifically so that she is identified very publicly as the person who you go to if you have any Title IX issues. Congratulations.
And then in AC-AB-R, at the bottom of the page, it needs to say section one before definitions because later on in section three, there was a reference back to section one.
Okay, sorry, can you repeat the section again, please?
Okay, AC-AB-R.
Yeah.
First page where it says definitions. It needs to have section one before it. Because later on in the document, in section three, there's a reference back to section one.
I just want to make sure that I'm putting that in correctly. And I can actually throw this off here. So Christine, you can see up on the screen if that's working.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And then on the next page, under point four, sexual harassment. I believe this policy is about employees, and it says students in point four.
That's if an employee-student issue occurs, I believe. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, what if it's an employee harassing another employee?
I'm assuming that it's going to be in a different section. So if you go down to eight, it defines employee and lawful complaint. So the complaint can be an employee or a student. And I think that's where they, they do go onto that in section two.
Okay.
That was. All right. Any other questions or changes to the Title IX policies? Okay, so we did have an amendment there. So we'll do a motion, we need a motion to, or the first reading of a revised policy AC. I think because we amended one of the new ones. So we need the motion to, to adopt the revised policy AC.
So moved.
And we have a motion from Denise, and we need a second.
Second.
And a second from Christine, so we'll do a roll call. Christine?
Aye.
Denise?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Brittany, aye. And Jody?
Aye.
All right, and then we have the first read, the first reading of policies AC-AA, AC-AA-R, AC-AB, and AC-AB-R as amended.
So moved.
We have a motion from Christine. And a second from Denise. And Christine?
Aye.
Denise? Leslie?
Aye.
Brittany, aye. And Jody?
Aye.
All right, and then we have policies AC-R and policies AC-F. We'll need a motion to rescind. And we have a motion from Leslie.
Second.
And a second from Jody. Christine?
Aye.
Denise? Leslie?
Aye.
Jody?
Aye.
And Brittany, aye. All right, so that's our policies. And we added an agenda item to discuss the printed board materials. So Jody, if you'd like to go ahead.
Yes, if you look at the protocols for materials, I mean, I feel like we could safely start printing things again. Brenda could hold on to them or put them in the mailbox. And then I know Christine, Denise, and I, we like paper. I don't know why we like paper, but we like paper. We like to make notes, we like to write things down. And I feel like that would be beneficial for the meetings. I feel like it's very hard going back and forth, I killed my computer. So, and I find it hard to read these large packets. I mean, what was it, 138 pages, 68 pages? It was very, very hard to read. So I would like to consider going back to paper as needed.
I would also like to add that if we do go back to paper, that we do double-sided so that we're not sending out 138 pages, you know, packets like this that times three, that's over a ream and a half of paper. So I would like to, if we are going back to this, I would like to do it double-sided, which means that when you get your packets and you start flipping them, that, you know, expenditures might be on one side and the end of that revenue starting on the net. So you're going to have to be very careful about what it is you're looking for and what you're reading. And I think.
I think, I think we could probably do that. I would say if we can try to, like, do an intentional, like, two-day quarantine of the materials in the Dropbox, like, maybe if Brenda puts them in there on a, on a Monday, and then you pick them up on a Wednesday, like, just so.
I would put them in like I do the board package. So when I send it out to everyone in the past, I just copy everything. Mailbox. And then it's up to you to come and pick them up.
Yeah, so I think if, once you guys get that, that they're available, just go two days, and then you can pick them up.
Yeah, I think that that would be great. Denise and Christine, are you content with that plan?
I'm fine, when I print it in, I'm double-sided. Yeah, double-sided.
And would you guys be comfortable, if you wanted printed copies, would you be comfortable printing and picking up from the office? Okay, all right, so we will move back to having some printed materials available for board members if they choose with a timeout in the mailbox for them. Okay, so our next agenda item is the superintendent's report.
Well, as you know, we've been doing a lot. It's pretty unprecedented time in education, and I thank all of you for the really careful deliberations that you gave to this. And I think everybody understood that going into all of this, there's really no one fantastic solution. So I think everybody, I can speak from GBS, will be happy just knowing how to move forward so that we can start working with a direction. So thank you very much for that. So I wanted to say first, it's been a pleasure working with our new principal, Kristen Reed. I really enjoyed it, and she's just been wonderful. And talk about having their first experience as a principal.
Trial by fire.
Probably enough sad there. We have, we do have some applications for the art position. I don't have anybody to bring to you tonight. We will have to see if somebody comes to you on the 18th. But in the event that something doesn't work out, we are still required to provide an arts education, and we may think of some outside-the-box ways to do that in terms of maybe having artists in residence or online art instruction. Or, we're really not sure, honestly. We're hoping that we're going to find somebody. But we knew it wouldn't be easy to replace Mrs. Larrabee, but it's even harder given this situation that we're in and also that it's a part-time position, kind of, at this point in the year. So we're still hopeful, but I just wanted to keep you up to date with that position. I've been talking a lot with Melissa White, and the request from the select board is that they're, that they come to our September meeting, which I think would be a great idea. And then the school board and the select board would have a chance to talk about a little bit more big picture in the community, where we are, how we're looking with the next budget season coming up, which I'm sure is just going to be as eventful as everything else has been. It's really just not an easy time when we're looking at, when we're looking at everybody's finances and the fact that this is going to have long-term. So I think it would be a great opportunity to invite them to our September meeting to be able to have those discussions and to just sort of touch base about our Net Zero project, which I know we've all put on the back burner right now. But if we're all together, it might be a good opportunity to talk about that. And other than that, we've just had a huge packet to give you tonight. And we are going to be working pretty hard for quite a while now. And we will absolutely promise you that we're going to do the very best for all of our Grantham kids.
Questions for Sydney at this point? From the board?
When do you sleep?
I don't, honestly. And I don't know any superintendents who are sleeping right now. I will tell you, I am, I'm going to try to go away a little bit next week. I'm trying. I know I won't be able to, but I am going to try and spend some family time, especially before my two older ones leave for their college experiences and gap year experiences for the year. So I will be in constant communication, but also trying to make sure that I get that family time in too. And maybe I'll sleep then.
Right. Any other? Okay, and I would just echo and say, Kristen, we won't put you on the spot and make you give a principal's report that you didn't write. But in the future, we are looking forward to getting a principal's report and hearing more from you about how things are going and all of that. We really appreciate those conversa, having those conversations with you too.
Thank you. We did talk about a principal's report.
Yeah, for the record, I asked her not to write one. Yes.
We decided the agenda was long enough.
Yes, and we, we will not have you just come up with one up off the cuff now. So um, thank you both for, for your work. We appreciate it. And, okay, any other questions for Sydney or for Kristen right now? Okay, so our next item is the consent agenda and we did amend the, what's written on the um, our agenda here to reflect that we have minutes from the June second meeting. And we have only minutes from the June second non-public. Were the two amendments to our agenda here. Any questions or comments for the consent agenda?
I didn't see the trustee, the trust fund report. Did I miss it? It wasn't there?
I actually ran into Maria at Rambach today.
Small, small town.
Yep. Um, and they just had some recalculations to do in the formula, so they'll be sending along, that along for the next packet.
Well, sometimes it's in our email or it's in the, yeah. Yeah. So we'll remove the trustees of the trust fund report from the consent agenda. Uh, on our, um, on our agenda it is. Was that June's? Oh, that was June's, but we were waiting for July's. Got it. No, thank you for clarifying that, Jody. Yeah, let me just make sure.
I wanted to thank too, if we can pass on to Karen, I don't know if she's still on here, but I really appreciate her sending us um the credit card statements and all the things to really make everything kind of easy to read and I don't know if she's still on here, but if you could please spank her for that.
She's on there.
I also want to know.
Thank you, Karen.
There's another slew of manifest coming your way for your document sign.
Okay.
So just so you know.
Okay, yeah, we do have the June one. So leave June on the trustees. The trust fund report. Okay. Anything else for the consent agenda? Did we have um the board correspondence? Did we have additional board correspondence that's coming into this one?
It's, I think there is only one thing, but I'll just bring it into the next August meeting. But I worked to get us all caught up to where we were from your last email about this meeting. Was the last public board correspondence.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so we'll need a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved. Right, we have a motion from Jody and we need a second.
Second.
We have a second from Denise. So um Christine?
Aye.
Denise?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Brittany? Aye. Jody?
Aye.
All right, the consent agenda is approved. Okay, so now I did want to just move in and I know we had a lot of questions and comments that came in as we were discussing. I think some of them were answered. And um Brenda, how are you, were you able to kind of keep up with some of those or are those going into record? Do you want me to read some of these?
We're going to print those off. The questions.
The chat and the Q and A.
So that we know who's saying what.
Yeah, perfect. Okay, I am going to read some of the questions that came in that we did not have a chance to get to. Um, and understand that some of these are things that we discussed, some of them are things that will be to come in some of the documents um that will be coming to our next meeting. But let me just catch myself up here. So um, all right. So we have a question of could Grantham offer a V-Lax facilitator for middle or high school students as well as elementary school? Think that's a great question for the district as we go forward for our plan. Thank you for all your hard work. Thank you to the SRS team. If we chose to go with um if we choose to go with GS and do V-Lax remotely and the student has an IEP, will GBS still offer, offer services that are in the IEP? Another comment that says, I support the hybrid, truly makes sense to do a soft opening and change if situation gets better rather than full opening and face dire consequences if things get worse. Again, appreciate the time and effort invested on all these strong work. A question of, we talked about travel outside of New Hampshire requiring, requiring quarantine if that travel is within New England. Do, why are staff excluded from onsite temperature checks? A comment, we have our temps taken on the way into DH every day. I am on the substitute list, I was not contacted and I am willing to sub, you can add me to your list of three. Has any thought been given to children with only one parent or in lower income homes that need to work? How will we ensure that they are getting the same level of access and assistance in a hybrid model? I Sure. I'm in the chat right now. Sorry. I'm in the chat right now. Um, a comment I think here should be taken with regard to commenting on risk unless you are an expert in the field of epidemiology. Parents can become substitutes if they really want to help in that way. Is there a long-term sub application available on the GBS website so we can encourage applicants? I didn't see it under employment opportunities on the main GBS page. Do, do, do. There's some questions of, please repeat questions from the live audience. This is not an open forum and this question, conversation is frustrating. Question of who was speaking off camera? Just some clarification from Leslie. Is it possible to come up with specialty plans for populations, i.e. to essential worker employees to possibly attend in person four days a week? Can you speak again about V-Lax waitlist as many classes are already on a waitlist, especially for sixth grade? Can parents decide to do V-Lax in place of the remote learning days and still be able to attend the in-person days? So a good question um as the plan comes together. If the hybrid model, would children be allowed to attend other childcare programs in the off days? How would working parents be able to keep up with the off days if the kids are in childcare on those days? If we proceed with a hybrid model, the parents who have a full-time job will need to find care for their children on the days they do not attend GBS. This will increase their exposure risks since they will be exposed to other kids, families, organizations. Why would we want to do this? I think it's important to note that if we do the hybrid model, we save money on subs and overall costs and us also lessen the tax burden for next year. A question of can the school, not now, offer some guidelines on forming pods? The New London School District is providing masks to all students. This would discourage any teasing, et cetera, depending on what kind of mask they wear. Will you provide that or maybe think about it? A thank you to Leslie. From a staff point of view and a parent point of view, I feel the exact same way, Leslie. Again, DHMC pediatrics have come out and said work have said we should work on fully opening, excuse me. This says my only concern is staffing. That's why I lean towards hybrid. That brought tears to Mrs. McFarland's eyes, Leslie. When you consider the health of the community, are you considering the larger Grantham community or just that involved in GBS? Is there consideration how Colby Sawyer College students returning to the area may impact the rate of disease transmission in the area? Just a comment on repeating the questions. I would think that most parents would want one class grade closed rather than the whole school if down one to two teachers. I speak as a parent with kids in two different grades. Excuse me. More subs deteriorates the quality of education and increases risk of viral exposure. I needed to mute at some point, I'm sure, more than once. Has there been any consideration for when students are in quarantine for any reasons? Will there be a resource to connect remotely due, so that they do not fall behind while classmates by any model will continue in person? Where would we get information about homeschooling if we might want to consider that as an option? Has anyone consulted with an epidemiologist to truly examine what relative risk is? I just heard from eleven an epidemiologist that recommends going back to a five-day week. So proud to be a part of the community that can have a thoughtful discussion and vote on this regardless of the outcome. Thank you to the all, thank you to you all. I know this is incredibly difficult and that everyone is trying to do their best for our kids. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Questions on the voting? So vote by mail. The voting would only be at the school if the school is in remote learning only. Someone says, let's go SB two, Secretary of State has standards for the signholding. Couple of questions about Title IX. I appreciate all you are doing, this is not an easy decision. I will reach out to my school's art teacher to see if he knows of anyone. Can thi, yay, can things change slash, slash, be reassessed to go from hybrid to five-day if things are going well? Um, that's certainly in that flex that we had talked about. It could go in either direction. We could need to shut things down further, we could need to open things up more. So absolutely. That's in one of, that's one of the Rs, right?
Yes.
Please give clear plan for middle school students and what V-Lax looks like for eighth grade. It seems GBS and LMS have different school plans. How do we decide? In addition, I support hybrid model for safety and soft opening, safety for teachers and children. Thank you for all you do. We certainly will have more information for the LMS and LHS parents once we have the full picture of what evidence plan is. And we will certainly help with making sure that communication gets out to them, to you all. And what grades are affected by the four teachers missing the start of school for quarantine? That's definitely more information that will come forward. You know, we'll, we'll talk about staffing um as the plan comes together, as we head towards the eighteenth. So in our Q and A, uh, we did have some questions that were answered, either answered live or Leslie was doing a great job of jumping in and being our like live answer, answer bot. How will the school system support the families if the decision is to go hybrid? V-Lax is simply a curriculum-based homeschool. This does not seem like it actually lines up with the beliefs presented earlier. And I'll just clarify with that one quickly. The hybrid choice is different from opting into V-Lax. So you could certainly add V-Lax on top of a hybrid option. But the hybrid option, the remote days will be done through curriculum developed through GBS, not through V-Lax. So just a clarification for that. Have you considered remote teaching versus remote learning? The, really what we're looking at today was the plans that were brought forward um from the committee who felt that we did have some options for being able to open in a way beyond um remote. What is the contingency plan if you cannot successfully get the additional staffing needed to pull this off? We certainly will see some more information about staffing coming as we get closer to that, the eighteenth. What impacts do you see on the costs and the overall feasibility of the hybrid option now that you have evidence about the twenty-three percent of students will not be coming into the school even with the hybrid model? We talked a little bit about that. How will we expect our children to adjust when they are starting kindergarten in a brand-new space and their parent cannot transition them into the classroom? That's certainly something, you know, to look at with, um, you know, as we get more information out to parents. But I will say as a parent of a, well, now it's not so recent kindergartner, um, you know, those first days you, um, our typical, typical model for most students is that they would be saying goodbye outside of the building anyway. They would be saying goodbye on the playground and parents are not typically bringing them into the classroom. So that would be just a little bit, you know, a very similar um transition into those spaces, but certainly individual families will work with um those teachers to make those transitions. Will we know what days they are going to school if it is hybrid before we have to choose the transportation? We should have a sense of, so if people are thinking about transportation, will they know which days they are going for hybrid?
Right.
Yep, and so more information will definitely be coming about that. Whatever option is chosen, is that mandated option for the year or can you go from option A to B? We certainly can flex um from option, you know, in, in between anything, it may even, we may wind up being able to open more fully or we may find that we need to pull back.
I think they mean like can an individual?
Oh, can an individual? Yeah, and that will come, uh, if an individual is looking, that will come in some of the guidance that will be coming to the board on the eighteenth. But there definitely will be an opt-in, opt-out change timeframe. We're probably looking at about two weeks if you wanted to change what your stated um position was. One for that appropriate, any quarantining that would need to happen, but then also so that we make sure we have space and staffing and all of those things available. And let's see, how will testing work if you decide on V-Lax? I believe that's a different system. Where would we get information about homeschooling if we may decide to do that instead? There is homeschool information available through the state. V-Lax seems to have classes already that are waitlisted. Will that affect our access to those classes? We talked about that a little bit. If your child has a symptom, how long until they can return? We are working on getting that um grid that Sydney mentioned, so that will be coming. How will music class work? That is
Good question.
The question of the day. Looking at Denise, our retired music teacher. What was the participation rate in the latest survey?
It's actually very good.
So two hundred and
So I want to get the number exact.
Strong participation rate in the latest survey. If Yeah.
The percentage of the people that
It was almost all.
It was almost all, so you know, if we're projecting two hundred and seventy-five kids, I think we have two hundred and about fifty. And like in that final tally, was it two forty-nine?
Two sixty-nine?
Two sixty-nine?
Two, oh, two four, two forty-three. Which one of those is it?
Is it that one here?
Sorry, that's okay.
Uh, two forty-three was the original baseline. So we had, if we have two hundred and seventy-five students, we had responses for two hundred and forty-three of those students was, which is actually an excellent return rate.
All right. Oh no, I lost my place. Oh boy, okay, here we go. Um, okay. Let's, okay, if you are leaning to move to remote learning anyway, would it make more sense to not spend the money or use it to support the parents that need it and just go full remote? I am not in favor of a tactic, no offense, but any tactic should not be voted on by a school board vote only. If with the five-day open, the gym needs to be used as a classroom, will the gym still be needed as a classroom with a hybrid or will the kids be able to have gym class? There are some, some things to come for creative uses of space and making sure that we're still able to offer all of our offerings, especially with our, our specials. Can we sign up for V-Lax on our own now or does the facilitator need to do it in order for GBS to get the state money?
You can sign up on your own.
So you can sign up on your own for V-Lax at any point. The risk assessment was not answered live. What was this answered? Mathematica is not a risk assessment if that's what you are referring to.
I have, it was anonymous attendee who had asked a question that I
Do it out.
Answer. Yeah, I'll pull it out of the answer. It's right here. Risk anal, this was from
Just unmute yourself.
Oh, yeah, right.
No, that's okay.
The original question was, risk analysis is always a consideration. It should take into consideration severity of an occurrence, probability of an occurrence, and the likelihood of occurrence. Has anyone done a true risk analysis to determine if any real risk mitigation factors need to be put into place? There are a lot of recommendations, but decisions have not been dictated by government. In the end, it is ultimately the board decision and that the mitigation being put in place seems severe versus the likelihood and probability given the national and global statistics. So I actually, I had followed up in writing and put it in answered and then he was like, wanted to provide more clarity as a follow-up.
Okay. Is full remote not an option at all? Not at this time, which we talked about. So if I homeschool and sign up for one V-Lax subject, then the school would get state funding and we would be fine not doing the hybrid. Um, and yeah, go ahead.
Well, yes, you would, we would still get funding with one class. I'm not really sure about the second part about doing the hybrid.
Okay. And more information about all of those options is certainly coming. If we proceed with a hybrid model, the parents who have a full-time job will need to find care and their, for their children on the days they do not attend GBS. This will increase their exposure risks since they will be exposed to other kids, families, organizations. Why would we want to do this? And we talked about that. So impressed, so glad my kids, kid is in this school as a hospital worker in the COVID ICU. Thank you for taking care of our kids. How does special education address in the hybrid model where kids are only in school two days a week? Um, and that is definitely, more information about that is certainly going to be coming and it will, there's going to be a lot of very um specific um information coming, working with families. Are face shields suitable in Are face shields suitable instead of masks? And in our guidance document, I think that's a great question. And in our guidance document that the board got from the SRS committee. It was clear that face shields will not be substituted in place of masks. Those are two different items to be used for different times and different appropriate uses. Please address how special education will be dealt with. As you know, it requires one-on-one interaction. I will not send my child to school if you go five days a week. I work in DHMC. Don't make this worse. A healthcare risk assessment, a real assessment based on real numbers for severity, likelihood and probability. This is how healthcare makes decisions on mitigation factors actually needed, not based on someone's fears or undocumented concerns. There is too much unknown to make a decision without the data supporting it. Amen on the last comments, Leslie. Staffing can be remote. I'm not sure. This one just says, why is no one considering that? I don't know if that was from the same question. Subs will be more available if the kids are in school. Subs aren't responding because they don't know the direction. If their own kids are in school, they will be more available. Five days in person doesn't mean we're all in it together. What about the 25% of families who will have to get no in person in order for that to work? So if you have no flexibility with 100% opening, but you already stated, you know, four teachers that will have to miss the first two weeks, how can you open with everyone back? I appreciate the recommendation of hybrid and I just need to say that no matter what the decision, it will be hard. There however, cannot be an increase in taxes based on a school board vote alone. What would Lebanon decide, would what Lebanon decides affect the decision? It certainly will affect our families who have students in Lebanon and we will work with those families. I think risk mitigation is a given here, social distancing, plexiglass dividers, masks and so on. The basic protocols required are designed to mitigate risk. So if there was any risk analysis completed, I don't see how it would change the safety protocols or the decision that is looking to be made here. Has anyone consulted with an epidemiologist to truly examine? We had this from the chat, this comment from the chat as well. I need.
Yes, we have.
And yes, okay, yes. I need to plan immediately. Please let us know what exactly hybrid means in terms of days, maybe removing my child. Thank you, Jody and Leslie for being strong enough to speak on behalf of parents. Can we have a choice in which days our children attend hybrid, Monday, Tuesday versus Thursday, Friday? Depending on work schedule or other children and family that attend SAU 88. And we, we will, Sydney had mentioned, we will work with families there. When will the decision be made about school opening and the plan you will adopt? So we have adopted the hybrid plan at this point. So the board voted to adopt the hybrid plan to move forward for the year. And we will get more of the actual details of what that plan will look like on August 18th. And if the entire staff is needed to bring in all the students five days a week, does that mean special ed? Will services be limited or not met because those special ed personnel are needed to be in a room with 10 students? And then we did have some questions for the Q and A that were answered. And I'm just checking in here. And then we had a question. How much CARES funding has been received by GBS and is there a spending plan? We got just over 14,000?
14,400.
14,400 is what we've received to this point. And most of that was used for summer planning, summer materials, the plans that were put in place for students to have continuity of education for those students who are most at risk over their summer. And some other. That was probably most of it.
Yeah, to run our summer program, we needed additional iPads. We had summer workbooks and bridging of curriculum books that we sent home. And then we increased the number of students that we serve over the summer. So it was additional stipends for teachers to work with students throughout the whole summer.
Okay. And like I said, I wanted to just run through these quickly to make sure folks know that we have seen them and that we know that many of them are still unanswered questions and we recognize that. And we know that some of the answers to these will come as more of the materials are put together. But many of these are things that you'll be getting more information about. And a lot of these questions are really great for us and for Sydney and for Kristen and for the SAU staff to have as we move forward to put the plan together. And it looks like we had one additional, will you delay the start of school to accommodate for the tardy faculty? So we are already looking at amending the date, the start date of school.
I'm not sure why the faculty would be tardy.
Oh, like late to the, I think. Ones who have to quarantine.
No, I don't want to delay the start of school.
So hybrid with, with, now that we have voted for the hybrid model, we do have more flexibility to be able to accommodate for those folks who will need to have that quarantine period for safety. So, okay.
I do have to respond to something irresponsible vacation.
Oh, sure.
These are mostly parents who need to take their children to college. So please don't get the impression that this is an irresponsible vacation time.
So this is, yep, this is parents who are people who are dropping older children off or take, taking older children to school, moving them in, that kind of stuff. And.
Brittany, can we clarify at least a general perimeter of what we're going to talk about on the 18th? We're going to be going over, kind of getting into the weeds on this, correct? And trying to work out a lot of this. I'm sure there's a lot of these questions, but we can't answer. Will we be answering the majority of them on the 18th?
I can say that the majority of things will be in the handbook in terms of what the operation is going to look like, but I'm not. I mean, a lot of these seem to be more questions geared towards the decision-making for tonight.
Kind of thinking like about music and gym and those kinds of questions that, you know, there were a lot of them, like kindergarten is playing on the floor and all those little things. And will we have a plan to, a general plan, I know we're going to try to accommodate families, but at least a general plan of what letters will go when? I mean, I know, I know we have a tentative thing here. Is this what we're going to work off of or?
This is a draft that, you know, you saw originally and through the, and through the presentation. We're hoping that by August 18th, we'll have a handbook ready for you. And then there are other things that are going to happen when the entire staff comes back. For example, deciding exactly what happens on that Flex Wednesday, you know, will be something that we wait until that comes back. So I can't say that on August 18th, you're going to have something that's perfectly laid out for you. But every time we meet and move forward, we will have more of everything in place.
Yep. And I think there are, I mean, I, we all, we all know and we're all sort of used to the, at this point, that, you know, that there's an ongoing sort of balance of what are the policies and the handbooks and the things and the big decisions that the board is responsible for? And then what are the sort of day-to-day functioning? And the decision-making that we entrust and give to Sydney and to Kristen and, you know, the, the SAU staff that are more of those like actual on the ground.
Like, and in, in any given year, we wouldn't bring to the board how we run music.
Right.
You know, so we, we're bringing the handbook to you. That would be things that we need your approval on for the daily operations of the school.
Yep.
Yeah, and that's more of what I was referring to is more of the comfort for the parents, not that I want to know how you, I want to tell you how to write a music. But more that the parents will have these answers because I would imagine, especially with younger ones, it's probably alarming to a degree of how all of this works. So that's, that's more of where I was going, not, I definitely do not want to be in charge of music.
And. And we also. Are you also going to continue doing some updates, either Zoom updates or newsletter or something along those lines?
Yeah, we'll be communicating a lot between now and then. And the first thing parents are going to see is a form going out where they're going to commit to their first trimester. We're hoping to have all of those back by Monday, by Monday, the 10th. I know it's a quick turnaround, but I also know that the community can do it because we sent out a parent survey on Thursday and got almost everybody responding, you know, in three days. So I know that families have a lot to talk about and a lot to decide. And I certainly understand there are a lot of difficult decisions out there, but we're hoping to have that first trimester commitment by Monday.
Yep. Right. And let me just do a quick check here. A question, if a parent makes a request for a change in in-person days, when do you hope to notify parents if that is possible?
Again, we'll have a space on that forum going out for you if you want to make a request that you're in a different, if you're in a different group.
And.
Or maybe.
Maybe we ask if they either, there's like a couple of families that you've already bubbled with.
Right.
Like I'm thinking of my own self.
They can put that in there and then we can see if we can accommodate it. If we can accommodate it, there's no reason not to.
Um, so we're going to try to accommodate that obviously. Will that be in the survey?
Yeah.
On the form.
Yep. And that's, that'll, so that'll be the next piece that comes out. And then after that, there's just going to be ongoing communication, you know, and definitely in some kind of weekly format through either parent updates or newsletter or something.
Right. It will come from me or Kristen or both of us.
Yep. Okay, so. I think we have run through these and we will have. Like I said, we will have more, you know, opportunities for folks to get more information about this. And I'm sorry if I've made anybody C-Sec moving my camera around between me and Sydney.
And my neck hurts.
Yeah, yes. And so. Let's see, okay, so our next is, do we have need for a non-public tonight?
I don't have any non-public.
Okay, all right. So we will take non-public off of our list for this evening. And just before we adjourn tonight, I just wanted to say, I really appreciate like what everybody brought into this in terms of the board and the conversation and the, you know, openness that folks shared. The really difficult, you know, gut decisions that, you know, gut-wrenching decisions that we all have had to make here. And I also think that having this meeting and doing it in person and trying to balance these, the technology is, gives us a sense of what it's going to be like for our teachers and for our school. And I don't know about you, but certainly it's not like super comfortable to sit for a few hours with a mask on. But I'm much more comfortable now than I was when I first walked through the door and felt like this is so weird. And so, you know, just knowing that we all are, I want to just let Sydney and Kristen know that the board is also with you guys as you are doing this. And you have, you know, our support moving forward. And we, you know, look forward to kind of seeing what that next phase brings. And I do just keep thinking about what Sydney gave us in terms of those, the three W's and the three Rs. And I will be washing my hands, wearing my mask and watching my distance. And I will be trying my very best to be resilient.
Reliable.
Reliable and responsible.
Yes.
Those are my Rs.
And you have to react.
And I, yep. And so, you know, I think those are really good things for us to be doing and to be showing our students as they come back into this. They're going to be doing all of those things as well. And so I was lucky enough this morning to sit in on the third grade boys breakfast club with Mrs. Widman. And it was like, there were some pieces there that I needed to hear as well. And I just think we have a lot of, clearly this is like that first domino has now fallen. We've made that decision and all of those other dominos are now headed down the tracks. But I know that we're going to make the best choices and the best moves that we can for our students. And I just really appreciate everybody's work here and the parent and the, and the community support. So thank you all. Anything else that anyone else would like to say?
Oh, I did have one, I didn't think of this.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Is we usually do the.
The teacher's breakfast. And we can't do it the same way, but, and I have to say, I was trying to think of something as an alternative and I really didn't come up with anything, but.
We can bring something to their rooms as long as it's.
I mean, not all of you bringing in, obviously, but. Like if we could arrange it where we pack something up and Kristen and I can, can do the delivery.
Why don't we do some brainstorming if folks have ideas for how to do that safely? Maybe we can share, like send some, if you have, Brenda, could we like send you our ideas? Would you mind if we sent you ideas for how to make that happen?
Yes, I'm not on.
No problem. Brenda's saying, even if you weren't saying yes, you're saying yes, right? Yeah. And. And we could do, and we can make, kind of finalize our plans for that on the 18th. And we still, and we, yes, yep. So we have that August 18th meeting that we can, we'll, we'll brainstorm some creative, safe ways to get them something and then we'll make a plan.
I mean, it might have to be prepackaged.
Yeah, yep. Yep.
We make things.
Yep. And Christine, did you want to share your?
Oh, you want to see the mask?
Yes.
So Christine has, Christine is going to just do a. A show and tell for us. So Christine is one of the, the many wonderful mask makers in town. And she brought just an example for everyone to see of what, so, and they have, Sydney, you know better, what, what has that group?
The Suzy Stitchers?
Yeah, offered for the school.
I believe that they have made two masks for every student and put them in an individual baggie so the kids can choose in three different sizes.
Oh my gosh.
Fantastic.
So.
This is my favorite.
It almost looks like camouflage.
Yeah, and it's pre-K through 12.
Pre-K through 12. Oh my gosh. Huge thank you to. The Suzy Stitchers.
The woman who runs this is just, she thinks of everything. So. Yeah, Janie Clark.
That's fantastic. And Brenda's going to want the dog one.
So every, every kid will get a baggie with two identical masks.
Christine, would you just unmute yourself so we can hear you a little clearer?
So every kid is going to get a baggie with two masks that are identical. And they have enough different patterns so that like in any class, probably in any grade, there won't be duplicates. So that means the kids, the kids are going to have to write their name on the mask. So they won't be using each other's mask.
Oh, that's smart.
Yeah.
That's very fantastic.
Yeah, usually you pick one side, like this is not very interesting to a kid. Well, they, they have to wash it.
Yeah.
And that's why you have two.
All right, thank you. And we appreciate that, that sewing work. That's, yeah. Okay, so anything else for tonight's meeting? Okay, then we need a motion to adjourn. All right, we have a motion from Leslie and we need a second.
Second.
Right, we have a second from Christine and we need a roll call to adjourn. So Christine.
Aye.
Denise? Leslie?
Aye.
Jody?
Aye.
Brittany?
Aye.
And the meeting is adjourned at 9:56. Thank you all very much. And we have to leave the room and actually leave the room.